Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, July 10th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, approved minutes, we have June 5th, 2023, June 20th, 2023, approved, but not released, executive session minutes of June 20th, 2023, June 26th of 2023, approved, but not released, executive session minutes of June 26th, 2023, and June 29th, 2023, approved, but not released, executive session minutes of June 29th, 2023.
So I move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sullivan.
Just for a comment, the reason why we're not releasing the executive session is because those issues have not been resolved yet, for no other reason than that.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Next on the agenda, we have appointments. Pat Corch, Library Trustee, term to expire 6/17/2024, town election in parentheses. Is Ms. Corch here?
Deja vu.
Good evening, I'm Ben Craver, co-chair of the trustees at this point. Pat Corch has been a library trustee in the past. At our most recent election, we were still down one trustee, and we got a nice letter from Pat saying that she would help us out. She has been a trustee in the past and was great, and in these difficult times, she is most valuable, so we wholeheartedly endorse this appointment.
Mr. Marson.
Mr. Chairman, so do I wholeheartedly endorse Pat Corch, and I move that we appoint her to be a library trustee with a term to expire June 17, 2024.
Second. And also welcome Pat.
May I say a word, too?
Yes, I was about to say, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I do, and when I first sent my letter, it was a few weeks before all this happened, and I was wondering if I was going to be all dressed up with no place to go. But it really pleases me that the town is working with our wonderful folks here, and you know, the safety, and everybody to try to make things work for the town and the townspeople. And, you know, getting the word out about exactly what it all means to everyone here to support the town is very important. And just as an aside, I will say, on July 10th, in 2020, we were celebrating the grand opening of the library building, so let's hope we can keep it going. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sullivan.
Perfect example of why we welcome Pat back. Pat has served admirably in the past, commitment very serious, and everything she just said there was apropos for the moment, and I appreciate Pat's sentiments.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, FAA Selectmen Appointment, Jana DeShanes, Jana, Jana DeShanes, term to expire June 30th, 2026. Wanted to make sure I pronounced your name properly, and I just put everything I could think of.
It was very close, Jana DeShane.
Excellent.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. For the last couple of months, I've been trying to figure out how best to put back to the community, to a community that's given me so much. And, you know, I have worked on my MBA in accounting, I've been working in higher ed financials for the last 12 years, and a lot of that, a lot of what I do in my day-to-day is difficult conversations, allocating budgets, trying to figure out what has to go where, and I thought this might be a good fit, and a good way, again, to get more involved in the town.
Thank you. Any comments from board members?
Just, thanks for stepping up, we had the conversation at the town meeting, I believe the FAA had four seats available at the time, now we should have three.
Now we should have three.
There's people out there, just keep coming forward, we appreciate it.
I've been saying it for a while, there are a number of qualified financial professionals in Dudley, and I called out, at least, I can't remember how many meetings, for some of them to come forward, thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. Marson.
I will also thank Jana, and I will be happy to appoint her to the FAA with the term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Because you've got all the seconds.
Perfect.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, welcome and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have reappointments, Recreation Commission, Roberta Johnson, term to expire June 30th, 2026. I believe Ms. Johnson is on vacation this week.
Just to make a motion to appoint, reappoint Roberta Johnson to the Recreation Committee?
Second.
Term to expire June 30th, 2026.
June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next.
Thank you, Roberta.
Yes, thank you. Next on the agenda, Cultural Council, Margaret Makuga, term to expire June 30th, 2026. Is Margaret here with us? Not seeing anything.
Is she a reappointment, Mr. Chairman?
She is a reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we appoint, reappoint Mrs. Makuga to the Cultural Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Mrs. Makuga.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda, licenses, permits, one-day all alcohol liquor license, Polish National Alliance of Dudley, PNA, Customer Appreciation Day, Saturday, August 19th, 2023, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on the grounds of the club. Is anyone here from, there we are, hello?
Hi, I'm Felicia Harney, and I'm a director at the PNA in Dudley. We are requesting to have a Customer Appreciation Day, where we could have cornhole and play some games outside. We have a grassy area right outside, next to the parking lot, and we'd like to be able to have the customers bring their drinks out there.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sullivan.
Has the police chief and the fire EMS chief that have made aware of it have signed off on it?
I know in the past, we've, PNA has done something like that and similar in the past. I don't see a problem with it, I don't think we've had issues in the past, so as far as from police side, I don't see a problem.
Is that going to require a detailed chief?
No. I know for the first year, I think you guys did the detail, and then after that, it was very mellow, so I don't think that was required.
We'll have tip-certified bartenders out there making sure no one is acting up, and the board will also be there as well.
Do they delineate area, Mr. Chairman, for drinking, or are they going to walk all over the parking lot?
No, no, they're not going to walk all over the parking lot, we have that grassy area, where it's a pretty big area, where they can play cornhole and stuff like that. It's not like they're going to be in the front of the building or anything like that, it's going to be maintained to that one area.
I just know, Mr. Chairman, in the past, jet alone, even at the church, but I know when cities had their outdoor area, we made them delineate access to and from the building to the area to prevent any misunderstandings between a patron and maybe someone in the parking lot.
Mr. Sullivan, do you mean something like bullet ropes at a bank, something like that, not that particular, but?
We can put those orange things up, so we can kind of barrier it, to have, kind of like, close it off, so that there's only one entrance to the back, if any.
Yeah, something like that, just to restrict, you know?
Could you do that?
Absolutely.
I think that would alleviate any concerns of the board, and?
We can.
Any other discussion? It's a pleasure of the board. Mr. Marson.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the one-day all alcohol liquor license for the Polish National Alliance of Dudley, Customer Appreciation Day, Saturday, August 19th, 2023, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on the grounds of the club, that'll be marked off specifically.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, citizen comments, we're going to start off with Mr. John Breyer with budget questions, wherever you'd like, podium, desk, wherever you'd like, long time no chat.
Bumped the chair, sorry. I actually, to try to speed things up, because you know I can ramble, I actually wrote down my opening comments, if that's all right.
Go ahead, Mr. Breyer.
Thank you kindly, sir. First, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for allowing me to speak tonight and present some options to resolve the unfortunate situation we seem to find ourselves in today. I also want to thank the many people who I have reached out to, who were kind enough, professional enough to give me information, feedback, and advice. Special thanks to School Committee Chair Kathy Carmini, many of the school committee members, certain members of the Charleston Board of Selectmen, and our own Board of Selectmen members that I'd really like to extend some appreciation to, John Marcy, Steve Sullivan, of course, you carry as chairman, and of course, the FAA Chair Mike Mayotte, you have all been tremendous resources in helping me, as just a private citizen, get the information that I need. And of course, I want to thank the many residents of Dudley and the Dudley Residents Forum on Facebook for all their help, so thank you. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank the many department heads and individual town employees who have handled this difficult situation and stress with the utmost professionalism and dignity. There were some who did not. Thank you on behalf of the community, we appreciate the nobility you have shown during these times. It's also an understanding that some clerks and administrative support have been brought to tears during recent events. Often being the first point of contact with the town, you have borne the brunt and the anger of those in fear, and on behalf of the entire community, we're so terribly sorry that this has happened, it should not have happened, it's unacceptable, and please know that you are appreciated and are heartbreak for the pain you've endured. It's easy to get caught up in these tumultuous times. We are barded with conflict, anger, hatred, every day we turn on our TV. Our nation's divided, our state's divided, civility's been long lost, and we all wonder, how does it end? These are indeed times that try men's souls. There are many people who are indeed struggling, prices are going through the roofs, job cuts are starting to gain momentum, and many people are afraid. Fear is a powerful emotion that can often blind people to the truth and cause them to do irrational emotional things. The storm which is coming, which isn't even here yet, is already engulfing us in its leading winds, and as this storm gains momentum, if we don't stand together, if we don't stand firmly with each other, it will consume us, it will divide us, we must be strong, we must be united. We're here today because of money, we're running out of it, we don't have enough to pay for the things that everyone wants, it's only going to get worse. But the truth is, Dudley cannot and will never be everything to everyone. We are a simple bedroom community with no industry, a local grocery store, four coffee shops, and a bunch of pizzerias. Simple favorite donut shop causes more traffic jams at a rolling major intersection than most cities experience, and everybody loves talking about it, it's part of who we are. We have Gentex, we have a beautiful small college, and some other well-respected companies, but well over 93% of the revenue that our town has comes from each other, the homeowners and the residents. It is what it is, and having served on numerous committees during the 25 years I've been here, from the Master Planning Committee, Planning Board, Economic Development, nothing we have done or tried has changed a single thing. We are what we are, a simple place to call home. We're sort of like a campground in the midst of a city, no matter how crazy life is on the outside, right, stressful, noisy, you know, you cross that Dudley sign on the road saying, "Welcome to Dudley," you're entering Dudley. There's a sense of peace that comes over people because they know they're home, and being home means you're with loved ones, your family, friends, and neighbors. We're peaceful, quiet, we have the freedom to live our lives the way we want, we're what America was founded to be. It's important to remember that it's easy to want to grow your government, to do more things, provide more services for you, but the fact is, Dudley is not the place to live if you want bigger government. We are not the place to work for if you want to make lots of money working for the government. We simply don't have it. What we offer is stability, a decent income, safe retirement, and an affordable place to call home, and what little money we have needs to be dedicated to the people who live here, right? Safety first, clean water, clean air, safe roads, and a safe, best-in-class school that focus solely on fundamentals of academics and the technology and innovations of tomorrow. There is no room, no tolerance for pushing any political agendas, ideologies, or distractions to that mission. We want the kids to be kids, we want them to learn and grow, let them compete, experience the thrill of victory and the pain of defeat, we want them to laugh. We're fortunate to have some really good, really professional, kind, and loving teachers and coaches who do just that, and so thank you for all you do. But we must not forget those neighbors who are no longer working, now on fixed incomes, who because of time itself or medical conditions can no longer afford those luxuries which once came so easy. We must remember, sometimes bad things happen to good people. We are a brother's keeper, we must not abandon them to apathy, we must keep them involved in the community and make sure they are never forced from their homes because they could not pay their property taxes. For many, their home is their only refuge, we must keep watch over them, we must keep them engaged and protected, we must value their lives, and we can never allow an 80-year-old widow to be forced to eat cheap tuna out of a can or drink chewy old milk because 40% of her social security is going to pay property taxes. We must provide relief to them, we must care, we must act. So it's with this in mind that I'm proposing the following minute for your consideration for the upcoming special town meeting, and four action items that can put us back on course. Are you ready to begin?
Go right ahead.
You got it.
Why are you here, sir? Go right ahead.
So, I'm not going to go into detail with this first one, because many of you have seen and I've posted online. All I wanted to establish here is that there is an approved budget that was voted on at 5/22. There's been a proposed budget that was going, that my understanding is being planned to be presented at the 7/25 town meeting. This is a comparison of these two budgets. The primary difference is that the proposed budget has the school assessment built in, and the rest of the departments are taking the hit. The problem with the way that ballot, or that is written on the warrant as well, is that it exhausts stabilization, which could possibly have an impact on our bond rating, and there is no contingency for the override votes, if any of them are successful. It does not say where those funds are going, so you'd have to go. So, it's not, what you basically have is what was looked at at that meeting, voted upon. So, I'm not going to go into details, the only thing that's important to get on the record, to clarify all the errors and misinformation out there, the fire department has not received a single dime in cuts. They have received a 9% increase over their initial budget at this same time last year. That was, it is the largest budget that they have ever been approved in their history, and to try to blame it on the taxpayers and the Board of Selectmen, that they have, funds have been cut, is simply not true or accurate. The way the process has always worked, for 200 years in this town, is you always go in with the number from the previous year, right, with expected inflation, and then as the year materializes, right, we see what's occurring, what emergencies may have come up, you know, what other mandates may have come up, and the town has always met, once free cash has been certified, and we know where our revenues are, we've always met later down the year, and provided supplemental funding. We've always done that, this year should be no exception. So I just wanted to get that clear, no fire or police have been cut, the budget is as strong as it's ever been initially. Now, if it's less than what they spent last year, well then they've got to come before you and say, "Why did I blow up my budget last year?" and do that in a public forum. So that's the big thing here. The other thing is that the existing budget already provides the funding for the library for the year. Now, there is, there was a question about, was it within $10,000 of it being decertified? We've learned that that information that was provided was just simply wrong, that, you know, that just because you fund a little less doesn't mean you get decertified, right? So the information you were provided by someone that you paid to give you accurate information was simply wrong, and that's all right, but we adapt, and so, the library is funded, the library's funding is less than what they would like, but the new solution also puts a little bit of a cushion in there, that way, you know, it's a $10,000 cushion, just in case there's any questions. So, that brings me to the next one, I'm trying to move along, please, if I have any questions, if you have any questions, just let me know.
Anybody have anything to say?
Want to take them as we go, you want to?
Take them as we go, is that okay?
Yeah, it's okay with me. Couple, I, real quick, Mr. Breyer talked about his initial four bullet points, which we're going to talk about, but in his bullet point, one, he's increased the town's revenue by $61,787, I'd like to ask the treasurer, collectors, that a true number, he's our CFO, he should know if the 21, 25, 182, 810 is correct, or the 25, 24, 45, 8 is correct. Can I switch that?
Mr. Carmini, do you mind?
Yeah, actually I do. I had sent out something earlier today, asking for information, I've got a stack behind me of information, and now I'm being called to comment on something that I'm seeing right now, so.
I want to apologize, Mr.
My currentness, I'm happy to go through. I've been here for everything, and will continue to be, I'm not seeing?
Before you begin, Mr. Carmini, I just want to, this is from citizen comments, I didn't know if you would be needed or not. If you need time, Mr. Marson.
Can we ask the question a little differently, like, John, where did you get it first, and then maybe Rich can?
Well, first, I just want to address Rich, I didn't see the C of Rich till?
Okay, but I mean, we're?
That's why, I'm with you on that one.
I mean, at the, at the end of the day, the number for revenue will be different, it's going to be a fact, we, there's going to be new growth assessed, there's going to be a second look, I'm smiling because I know the cellphone of our rep for the DOR, because there have been that many telephone calls. You have a town accountant who, you know, I'm sure she communicates five times as much, and one of the directors of account used to be our field agent, so we have the opportunity to go through and visit what's going to be a good revenue number. We're talking about $60,000 off of $25 million? What's the percentage of that? That's modest at best, and it's likely to increase. We haven't had a full year of revenues reviewed, I'm sure, once we have our audit in the first week of August, there's going to be a few aha moments where the town made some great assumptions, and then some were, probably should have been more modest, not quite at the point where you'd go to the wall over $60,000 for the sake of argument, sure, let's take it, knowing that, as Mr. Breyer had mentioned, in the fall, we're not factoring in much of anything as far as free cash going, right now, your town accountant is closing out your revenues for the year, you're going to be doing your end-of-year transfers, correct? So what she's trying to do is to close out the budget with all positive numbers, you're not really going to close out anything to a negative unless, of course, there's a borrowing within 90 days, so I'd go through and say, great, if it's, if it's within $60,000 of a pretty solid budget number that's been used for the, for the town meeting, I'd be happy to move forward with that, with that presumption, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Is there a bigger detail? I'm happy to go through.
That number actually came from your own numbers, I didn't, I didn't come up with that, see, the May town budget, then if you go by the side-by-side, see, the May budget had a number of, excuse me, what, 25, 3?
244.
244, all right, so?
From the 20, 25?
Yeah, so?
Sorry, go ahead.
Hold on, I gotta, let's go on here. Here we go, this was the approved budget, and this is the proposed budget, so it was 25, 182, 810 was the budget that was approved on May 22nd. The budget that you have on the warrant increased that to 25, 24, 45, 97, so that 61, 797 is your own number that I simply carried over to the May 22nd budget, because by law, right, you have to have a balanced budget.
Because we put stabilization.
Yeah, stabilization is on highway.
So, so I made sure? So, so I made sure that I was using whatever numbers have already been vetted through your own process. I didn't add any numbers of my own here.
Okay.
All right? So, sure.
And that number will probably be different.
Yeah. I was just shooting for the balanced budget that's required.
Oh, that's...
Yep.
Anything? Oh, wait for Rich to respond.
So, so what I did is I added that 61, 787 with the intent that that's going to go into stabilization because we don't know if it's a real number. I have $10,000 moving to the library to give a $10,000 cushion between whether or not, what I didn't want is I didn't want the library to have possibly any aid affected if it didn't meet that state minimum, right? And the state minimum was three years average plus 2.5%. So yes, it may not, you know, have the school, I mean, the library closed, but would it affect aid down the road? So I wanted to make sure that was off the table. And so that's why by throwing that $10,000 from your 61 extra revenue number, we give them that cushion. And because we don't know if that revenue number is a real number or not, throw it into stabilization.
That's the thing with this. It's a moving target.
Exactly. So don't spend it, throw it in stabilization, then when the fall comes and things survive, if it's there, then you can readjust budgets. So that's why it's not spent. I've just added it because it was on that budget.
That makes sense?
Well, yeah. Especially when the town administration explained where some of the money...
The free cash number is the same for both budgets. Yeah.
And my second comment, Mr. Chair, would just be more of an editorial as opposed to factual. And I'm sure it wasn't Mr. Breyer's fault, but single out the fire department, talk about a 9% increase when the other departments are right there, 7%, 3%, schools, 38%. There's other departments. I just think the chief can probably explain better than I can. His revenue, his, he came to every meeting in the summer, he was short-staffed all year, told us more than once that there was going to be a problem with his budget, overtime, back filling a position that was vacant, back filling a resignation. So just a single out, and I guess I know it wasn't John's intent. It's not fair. Single out one department. Everybody is looking for an increase of some sort, so...
Police chief would like to, do you mind?
If I can, just real quick. I have a quick question.
Thank you, Rich.
Department. On your FY '22, you got 1.257 and your FY '24, you got 1.269. That reflects a $12,000 increase over two years. That would not be 9%. Then FY '22, you got 1.595 and 1.722. So in two years, again, you're going by what last year, it wasn't a 9% increase.
It is a 9% increase over last year, so last year was 1165835.
So last year, we spent less money than the year before that?
Yep. So it's still 9% higher than last year.
I'd like to differ with your numbers.
Well, the numbers are the numbers. It's math, it's math. I mean, I didn't compare it to FY '22. I compared it to FY '23, which is usually what you do.
From FY '22, it's a rounding error. It's, what is it, about 11? Rounding error is a little strong, but it's about 11,000. There was less spent in '23 and it's a tick above '22. I understand. It's, it's 9% above last year, but still taking into account. Could I get the 500 if I'd like to? I just figure we'll address the items as they come. That way, we're not going back an hour.
Good evening. Thanks, Mr. Chair. So, John, I had, and I can't read this, I forgot my glasses again. In FY '23, I had a budget of $1,317,838.37. And just for reference point, I do have somebody laid off right now. As of July for us, we have one full-timer out of the building. And as a result of that, I have no call department and I have no perdiems.
Well, we can get into that a little later on because I want to stay focused. But at this point in time last year, Chief, your, your, your budget was 1257996 and that was FY '22, it was 1165835. Now, you may have spent $1.4 million and so the 1269 is a decrease from what you spent, but it is an increase.
FY '23 isn't correct. I didn't go backwards from FY '22 to FY '23.
Rock solid. Prove me wrong.
I'm going to, I'll have to refer to you, but my budget was not less in FY '23 than it was in FY '22. It wasn't.
I don't have it. At this time, when budgets are initially established, this was your budget. Now, throughout the year, right, as needs come up as often, you discuss it with them and if they feel it's legitimate, they've always provided transfers and funding. We have never, ever short, shortcut our public safety.
Well, I understand that, but the problem is I, we have contractual obligations through contracts and stuff. My expenses, my expense lines, I've level-funded since 2014. Now, you've been on boards and committees and worked with me, so you know that. And back when we went for 24/7 coverage, I remember, you were a staunch supporter of that. But now I read posts, you want to go back to volunteers and things like that, and I don't want to get too far off the track, so I don't understand where the 180 came from.
Well, it's from the actual budgets and these are the numbers. Now, I'm not saying that you ended up the year with a final budget of that number. That's not what we're discussing here. We're talking about what was established as your budget when the, when the year started and that was it. And again, we have always, as a community, always delivered when people could justify the expense, we've always been able to get supplemental funding.
And I agree with you, but I'm telling you right now, come to the building, I'm down one person, I'm down a whole call department, and I'm down all the perdiems.
And it shouldn't be that way because why did that never occur once before? Why, in the first time in our history, has the sacred mission of the fire department, save lives, been put to the side for contractual obligations and career advancement funding and $70,000 more in an overtime budget line account? We've never, ever sacrificed public safety. We've never, ever sacrificed lives to do that. And there are ways to front-load a budget so that that does not happen.
I understand that, but I, first of all, my overtime never increased by 70,000 if that's what you're insinuating. That's been level-funded except for I asked for $15,000 more if the override passed, eliminating the two additional full-time positions, which wasn't very popular, so we took that out for the...
Chief, I have always, I have family that are firefighters. I have family that are police. I have always been a strong advocate for public safety. I've spent my career side-by-side with them in some of the most hideous incidents. I'm not here to tell you how to run your department. What I am here to say is the number-one mission is to save lives.
Correct.
And if you have to front-load your budget and address this issue, there is no reason to cut the perdiem officers today or that staff today when you could have been shooting out to eliminate those, say, "Guys, we're going to have an issue in March. We're going to have an issue in May." You don't do it. You don't put people's lives at stake. And it could just be a difference in management and forecasting and experience, but you just don't do that.
I understand that, but you also can't foresee what the call volume's going to be. It's increased every year. That means it costs more money.
And that's why we'll give you more money. If your volumes are increasing.
And that's fine, I agree. You've always been good and I appreciate that, but you know what? Tell me where the money's going to come from.
Well, because the municipal revenue, and I think the town has been very prudent in doing this, right? When you look at excise taxes and the $3 million in municipal revenue, they haven't really forecasted an increase. It basically stayed the same. Now, let's just say there's a 10% increase in that. That's an extra $300,000, right? Free cash gets certified. What if the state aid comes in higher? Right? Doubtful. But what if? I mean, but those are the things why we've always put that supplemental funding down the road so that we have, they get better visibility and better, and believe me, if you came and said, "Look, it's February and guys, the money's still not there. We need an extra $300,000," you would get it overwhelmingly in an override.
Wait a minute.
Sure.
Wait, hold on. How many times did I come to this board and say I was going to be overspent last year? How many times? At least five?
I can't remember how.
And kudos to the board that they managed to do it without raising taxes, right? They did it through transfers, right? So the raising, when that question goes to the taxpayer, it should be because the gentleman you've entrusted to run the town and the finance committee and the treasurer have said, "This is it. We have no more. If you need it, we'll give it. We've always given it." And that's what I'm saying is, I really believe what you, what you should do is, is you've got to reverse the call. You've got to put your perdiems back on. You've got to put your staff. And yes, the town is going to come through and as that budget gets exhausted and they have better visibility, either they'll do it through the supplemental funding or if we have to do an override specifically to make sure people get the medical treatment, we'll do that.
I cannot bring my perdiems back or my call department unless I'm, unless I get that full-timer back. There is union issues there.
Well, maybe as one of the other action items, figure it out, right? You know the town's going to back it. They want a fire department. They want, this is the number-one reason, right? So...
I'd just be happy to be back where I was three months ago.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Mr. Chairman, we keep hearing, John, we keep hearing, "Front-load the budget. Take the money from where?" Tell us where we can find the $300,000, for example, you just referenced. Where can we find it today?
Well, you can't find it today. When I say, when I talk about front-load your budget, is you're front-loaded with the revenue, knowing your expenses are still there. And so, as you make sure that your, your current expenses, right, are being met, you start looking 12 months down the road and say, "Okay, if I maintain this level of spending, my funds are going to start exhausting at this level here," and we'll stop totally possibly in March or April.
So, you said, "May this comment about, maybe excise tax comes in $300,000 more. I don't know if Lisa's here. I wonder if we've ever had what our yearly increase is on excise? Let's assume it doesn't. Let's assume we have no other source of revenue and we front-load all these departments. Now, what, now what do we do? We bare-boned our, he already told you, hasn't done his expense items since 2014.
That's the time to...
Where do we find the money?
That's the time to do that override. Then, not now. Because we don't know what it looks like. We don't know what the situation, right? The override is of the last resort.
Pretty, pretty close to the last resort already at a 10% approved cut at town meeting. But 10% across the board, John.
Oh, I...
Some departments more.
Yeah, I mean, I saw the assesses, 78%. This is one of our chief revenue producing, they've got to somehow be made whole here.
Treasurer's office down one. Assesses down one.
I, I, yep.
I can call you back if you want.
Yeah.
But we'll move it along, but one thing I just wanted to add while we're here, something you said earlier about, about a storm coming, and this is just the beginning. I've been speaking with selectmen from other towns and they agree, 24, 25. This is front-running budgets and hoping things work. Hope strategy, hope isn't a good strategy.
No.
And, and the other thing is that this moving things around, it's like a game of musical chairs. The music hasn't stopped yet, but it's gotten real quiet.
Yeah.
I think you'd agree with that. It's, I'm just...
And that's why, but going back to, you know, Selectman Sullivan's concern, where does the money come from? That's why in the action items, right? It's easy to say, "You got to do this, do that." That's why I gave some, an actionable item, which is number three, that we can discuss. But, but I wanted to get to the amendment because that could provide some immediate relief to each of the individual departments on a voluntary basis.
Before you get to that, Jeff, did you have a question? I just want to make sure we address things as they come.
I just wanted to mention one thing that, you know, he's talking about a safety net that doesn't exist anymore. Last year, we had opera that we could fall back on. I don't know what the exact numbers were, but I believe it was somewhere, what the town realized was somewhere in the range of 300.
Overall, the opera money was 3.4 million.
It used over three.
Over, over the last three years.
Yeah, over the last three years, but in the last year, I think there was a portion that went to the, went to the schools and then there was a portion that, that went to the towns to, to patch up some holes. That doesn't exist anymore and all of, all of the town departments have realized double-digit inflation like everybody else. There's a lot of increase in cost and, as well as contractual obligations and whether, whether people like it or not here, in the school department and everywhere, those contractual obligations must be met, so I just wanted to, just wanted to point that out, so. And one of the biggest things, again, is opera doesn't exist anymore, so that was a false sense of, of safety over the last couple of years.
And that money was audited by the federal government? How we spent it, right?
Required to be audited when you reach a certain threshold with it, which that certainly reached.
I know that's going to be a hot word later, so I just wanted to start the party. Go ahead, Mr. Breyer.
Let me answer one second. Hand the care act money to them. That's all accounted for. So when people put out there, you have 1.5 million you can use. Where'd you use it from last year? Mr. Ruda just explained it to you. It's gone. We've been audited. That's a big word, buzzword. Everyone's doing audit, doing audit. Well, we're getting constantly audited and everything's accounted for. There's no hidden money.
So, I mean, the gentleman, I can't see because I don't...
Jeff, the highway supervisor.
He's absolutely correct. There is no safety net. We are the safety net and they are our safety net. We are mutually dependent upon each other. We cannot rely upon the state. We cannot rely upon the federal government. And all the residents want is better visibility of what is the situation. Like, we, you know, the May 22nd budget provides more funding, right, than the one that's being proposed on the 24th. And that's because the school assessment is baked into that, right? You had to do that. And so all the departments dramatic hits, right? It's basically if you ever want to ruin a town, that's the budget you go with. And it's then, you cease to exist, right? So we hate, we need to take that budget totally off the table, the one that's being proposed. It's simply not an option. And in talking with people, this new budget based, not the new budget, I should say the amended May 22nd budget brings everyone back to the May 22nd level. It brings, we have to do the override as a town for the schools, which will cost the average homeowner of $3,600 a year in taxes, about $230 a year. People will do that. To stop this mess around, the override for the school is going to pass because $230 is a reasonable number, all right? Everything points to that. It's time that we, we, we end this thing with the schools, right? Because we can battle it out at super-town meeting, we can battle out and refuse to certify super-town meeting, we can have this, force the state to come in in December. It's a no-win for everybody. The $900,000 for the schools has to be paid, right?
What if it doesn't pass?
It will.
I appreciate your optimism. I'm seeing heads, I'm seeing heads nodding no behind you, by the way. What if it doesn't pass? That's, that's your safety net. Minus 10%, minus 900,000, town-side budget only. We brought the numbers up the last meeting, puts us back at 2015 funding level. That's not even like a worst-case scenario. That's a probable scenario.
All right. So the school, let's play this out. So the override fails. Now, I was, I've been working closely with the, with the chair of the school committee. Do you mind if I have her come up for a second? Because there are timeframes they have to operate. And so even though we may have the budget, they're going to have to set the super-town meeting date relatively soon, before this vote, right? Because of all the deadlines. So she can confirm that what will happen is they're going to set the super-town meeting date prior to the vote. Now, for those at home, it's not to threaten you, you got to do the override. It's because they have to plan that the override's going to fail and it has to go to the super-town meeting. So if you want to maybe clarify a little better.
Just like we do, John. We have to, we have to assume it fails. We have to assume a worst-case scenario.
Right.
There's no lot, no choice.
And have a balanced budget.
In balance.
We do, but the choice, the choice is better than this proposed budget. We do, but the choice, the choice is better than this proposed budget. The choice is fighting it all the way to the state. So, they have the super-town meeting, right? Dudley loses. We're fully anticipating that Dudley's going to lose the super-town meeting, right? You're going to approve that, right? The FAA is going to approve it, and the town meeting's not going to approve it. Because we'll bring it to the brink. We'll bring it over the brink. But, and so, what happens at that point, the state in December comes in and mandates FY '23, 112. We lose control of everything. They bring in their DOE teams, their audit teams. They shake that place to the ground. We don't want to see that. And I really firmly believe, but that's the choice, is that before you get rid of people dying of heart attacks and leaving them on the streets because you don't have the money to pick them up, you can continue to operate the government under the 522 budget while you're battling this assessment. But I don't think it needs to go there anymore. People are tired. People understand $230 is a very reasonable request, you know, for the schools. I think people have come. People have done a lot of homework. And yet, will a third still vote against it? Possibly. But I really believe that with the information, everything's been discussed, I'm fairly, I'll tell you what, if the override fails, I'll totally stay out of politics and government for the rest of my life. And, you know, I'll work a dip in, help the line goes faster.
That's the scenario, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Kamanyani wants to speak. We live in a scenario where the 901, which was 867, became 901, can pass at the special-town meeting in July. So, they get their funds. And if the, if that takes away the reason for a super, if the override fails, we're on hook. We are on the hook to the 901.
Can I clarify something? You just said the 86, the 901, the 867 became 901?
Yes.
Because we actually decreased what we were assessing to the towns by almost $100,000 from our meeting.
Original number, Mr. Matthew presented, was 867. Then you guys came back with the new assessed number of 901. Mr. Matthew talked to me about it after two meetings previous. It was something about a position...
Right. Because we had just voted at our last meeting to decrease the overall assessment by $200,000. That was in the total budget, which decreased the assessment to the town by almost 100.
Good evening. The $34,000 is a remnant of the FY '23 allocation. The town allocated $280,000 additional money, above and beyond what was in the budget article, as a separate warrant article for the school district. The difference between that $280,000, or $274 that we actually used, or whatever that number was, versus the 2.5% increase that our assessment was allowed to increase under your, under the budget proposal, that difference is the $34,000. That's why it keeps coming back up. Because our assessment last year, even if we're, our assessment will go down by that $34,000 from FY '23 to FY '24, if it's not accounted for. I know your budget was one thing, but you had an additional $280,000 allocation last year. Everybody, you know, seems to recall that. The 2.5% increase on what was in the budget was $34,000 less than that. So, that's why it keeps coming back up. Our assessment to you is one number. What you have in the budget here, plus the separate warrant article, was, met that number last year. The warrant article for FY '24 obviously does not exist. The opera monies are already accounted for in your own budget. And as a result, the 2.5% increase to our budgetary assessment that was in the budget warrant article last year comes up $34,000 short to level funding.
So, Mr. Chair, the 280 minus 34 is 246. Is that 246 carried over to this year's budget?
No, nothing's carried over. That was, the 246 was the 2.5% increase.
No, no, that was 280. 280 was separate. You're saying $34,000 left.
I understand the 280 was separate. But what I'm trying to say is, when you take our budget number from last year that was in the budget article, and you add 2.5% to that, it doesn't equal 280. It equals roughly 246 or whatever, $34,000 less. So, that's why this $34,000 keeps coming up as a recurring theme in everybody's numbers.
The confusing part, and we discussed this last, when we did planning for this current fiscal year, the confusing part is that the strategy behind separating out the article for 280 and not making it part of the assessment was to make it crystal clear, and I think everybody on the board understood that at the time, the FAA understood at the time, that was it. That was the end of the, it was a cliff. That was opera money that was used to separate it out and pull it out and say, "This cannot be part of the assessment, because we don't have it anymore. This is the end of it." And what Mr. Matthew is saying is that 2% over the assessment equaled a certain number that was just below 280. So, he's figuring that additional $34,000 in, because they used it as part of their assessment, which is what we thought they would do. It was more of a strategy just to publicly call out the fact that the additional 280 article, which we will use to fund the schools, represents the end of the opera money. My time. And if I may not... So, the opera money is still being accounted for in the budget, though, going forward with the 2.5%. The new assessment, yes. Because technically, and I know how the district is looking at it, they're looking at it as part of their assessment from last year. We took it out as part of the assessment, because we wanted to make it crystal clear that it could no longer be considered as part of the assessment. It couldn't be built upon, because we can't, we don't have that kind of money, that opera money anymore. So, that's why it was specifically separated out in the form of an article, a one-time shot, which is probably the terminology that was used at the time, a one-time shot, to meet the increased assessment without making it part of the assessment.
But now it is.
To illustrate that that's the end of it, in terms of what we have for opera money to put out, to put towards the school, to the municipal side of the budget and so forth and so on. It was another statement of the town saying, "It's time for an override."
Thank you, Mr. Ruda.
So, did you want to, like, I think that question was to understand, do you want to stay for a minute?
Oh, you're not getting away.
Yeah. I think it's important for people to understand, like, the process that's already underway because of the assessment dispute, that they have timelines that they're dealing with to try to avoid it going to December without a budget and the state taking over. And while they're, right, so they have their timeframes that they have to stick by, and we likewise have timeframes that we have to stick by, because, right, you've got to have a certain number of days of posting before you can actually have the, you know, an election. And there's going to be a conflict. And I don't want people to think there's a large conspiracy here to put a gun to their heads. Because the timing of it is that the school committee is probably going to have to set up the super-town meeting for, like, within a couple of days, right after the override vote. And so, what some people may think is, "Oh, my gosh, they're setting up this override, this super-town meeting, to try to force us into voting for the override?" No. It is a genuine coincidence. It's because of timelines. If the override passes, they have to, then cancel their super-town meeting.
Which is what we would do.
Yeah.
Right. I think it's important to understand, I think, when they were, when you were originally doing the budget for this upcoming meeting, they put the $901,000 into the non-contingent budget, right?
Yeah, your budget that you're proposing.
In their proposed budget, because they didn't want to have to have any conversation about a meeting. That was my guess of why you were doing that.
That's right, Kathy.
Right. Because then that eliminates that. We, as a school system, are now on a 112th budget from the state. So, we have not, like, we are not budgeting right now according to the 901 additional. We have laid off over 21 people. We have not hired back after retirements. And we have built schedules as if this is not occurring. So, I don't want anyone thinking that we're banking on anything. So, just to make sure, because I think that there were some discrepancies about that. Was there other questions? It's hard, like, for us to, I can see both viewpoints of putting it in the budget or not putting it in the budget, and that is your decision. However, for us, hiring back the 21 people that we just laid off, the sooner that we can, they know what's going on, the better it is to do that. But obviously, whatever the selectmen feel is the best for the town is what we would do.
Anyone have anything?
Sorry. Just, you know, I always say I want participation. There's a lot of people there. I really am glad there's a lot of people there. I'm glad there's participation. Glad John put himself on the line, as opposed to a guy with a fake name, a fake profile somewhere on Facebook. But we're, there was no gun to anybody's head. This budget process, including the schools, over a year, we met with them, John talks to Mr. Matthew, Mr. Lamash probably daily during the budget season. They came before us. They have meetings. And, you know, people can't follow along. That's the big thing they always say. No gun to anybody's head by us. No figurative gun to anybody's head by the schools. This is the reality we're at. And as you said, it's going to pass, otherwise it disappear. I hope that's not true. Hope it passes, not to keep you around, but we have to deal with the reality of a scenario where it passes at the regular, at the special-town meeting, because then that's a real number.
But this...
But they get, they get their, above their assessment, extra 901. We go 10% minus 901.
But this will be the first time. And that's where, I think it was a tactical mistake, first to shoot for so much and lump it all together in one override, right? So, that's the first defeat. Take that off the table, right? To not have segmented them from the beginning, I think if you would have done an independent line item for the school assessment, and then do the menu item for the various departments, I think you would have had a combination of things that were, would have been approved. It was, people were not going to tolerate a 33% tax increase.
Once again, I don't want to speak for the schools, and Mr. Chair, thanks for your letting us digress here. That was a strategy put forward by the schools in conjunction with us, to fund that education stabilization fund with the extra money from the first year. And in my, it was a big raise. Listen, I'm retired, fixed income. It was, it's a big number, 33%. But it looks so much bigger because the tax rate's so much lower. But that being aside, that was, I thought that was a sound plan they put forward. They gave us four more years of budgeting against the assessment, because I don't want to speak for Mr. Matthew or Mr. Lamash. They made it clear. They came forward a one-year plan, I think a two-year plan and a five-year plan, roughly, right about, if we do the five-year, that was the one we ultimately...
We were asked to provide a plan that would cover our potential increased assessments for the next five, for the FY '24 and four years beyond that.
Right. So, now...
At the town's request.
Yeah. So, now, that that's failed, it failed strongly. We got the message. They got the message. Now, we're in this split menu, which I was fundamentally opposed to, because it pits department against department against school. But then I started thinking, I guess a little bit's better than nothing. So, this number, and our number of minus 10, where are we, where are we going to go from here? Like, you keep talking about more money in the fall, and maybe next year. They're going to come back next year, and we're going to be still down 10%.
I'm not saying that anybody's getting any more money. All I'm saying is that we're going to know what we have, because things will be certified, right? We're going to actually know what we have in hand. And we're going to know what we're going to be able to fund without having to go and hit the taxpayer up for additional increased property taxes.
We already know it. We already know it's certified. They report to the state the earnings, the town's...
So, on the municipal revenue side, what is that number, right? It's $3 million? Is it going to be 330,000? Is it going to be $3,300,000 this year? That's $300,000 extra that can go in fund. We don't know those numbers yet.
Again, I hate to put Rich on the spot, but do we average $300,000 increase in excise tax? I'm going to say probably not, right? Because I...
There'd be a 10% increase.
Yeah. New growth is only 260,000 this year?
120.
120 in new growth. So, this, I know, John, you're just trying to make a point, but we have to deal with the numbers that are given to us. Rich gives us numbers. Deb Thibodeau gives us numbers. John collates the data. I would just like to know if we average $300,000 in excise tax. I'm thinking a lot of people aren't buying cars in today's market.
Michelle, do you want to give this to them? I actually have for you all your municipal revenue from 2016 through 2022, because 2023's not finalized. Right? If you want to see what your municipal excise tax is, and motor vehicle, and personal property, it's right here. I didn't hand it to you, and this will actually come in handy when I talk about the audit.
Mr. Riley, I just want to add something. I'm going to speak for myself, not anyone else. Why I wanted the one override, one vote, one number. You'd mentioned something earlier about the devastating cuts in the assessor's office. There's just one person in that office now. And them, along with the treasurer collector's office, that's where a lot of the money comes into the town. And if we don't have the money, if we don't have people collecting the money, as you know, I don't mean to keep saying, as you said, but there's a storm coming. There could be some difficulty collecting revenue. And with less people in the office, if we're not collecting the revenue, how are we going to pay the police, fire, highway people? Pay everything else. That's why, and I didn't want to pit people against people, to have, like, you know, if you're going to vote for anybody, vote for us. Vote for this. It's kind of like American Idol with the menu, you know? It's, and I understand, people have in their mind X amount of money they can afford, but how do you pick?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan.
Excise tax from 2016 to 2017 went up $22,000. 2017 to 2018, $55,000. 18 to 19, $96,000. Went down, $73,000, 19 to 20. Went up $50,000 from 20 to 21, but was still below 2019's level, and went up to 1. The last year, he has $1,692. So, it was $1,657. What's that? $35,000. So, the largest increase we saw was 96. And then, two years after that, I mean, the next, very next year, I'm sorry, it went down $73,000. And then, like I said, 2021, it was lower than it was in 2019. I don't see a $300,000...
Oh, no. And I just threw that out as an example.
No, it was not realistic. It's not realistic, John.
I, I, I'm not saying, all I'm saying is, I think it's prudent, and I think it's good that you stuck with the number you did today. Because six months from now, we're going to know what the real number is. Is it less? Is it more? If it's more, how much more? If it's less, then you can actually go, when you, when you really, when everything, when you have clear visibility, and the emotion level has gone way down to where it should be, you'll be able to think clearly and say, "This is the override amount that the police department needs in order to fund this year and position them for the storm in '25. And we're going to get ahead of it now, right? And this is the number. This is the number for the fire department. This is the number for general government." All I'm saying is, it's premature for that. And the fact that you're going to, that we've had two failed overrides, right now, simple works best. And if you, your override amounts are based upon this budget, that's never going to pass on town floor. And so, if you would have based your override numbers on the May 22 budget, okay, and if you just look at that, for instance, where the initial departments may have fallen a little short, they could have been made whole. I've got so many things flying around here right now. I'm sorry. It's the comparison of budget one.
The one that says amend on floor and right at the top, that one?
Yeah, yeah, the difference. Yeah, here you go. So, for instance, let's use the fire, let's use the fire department as an example, all right? So, the May 22 budget gave them an initial starting budget of $12,69,000.
$12 million.
I mean, $12 million. Oh, don't you wish. No. $1,269,000, right? The July one, if that passes, automatically takes $181,000 away from them, and only gives them $1 million. Now, it would have been a heck of a lot easier to do the override question based on them already getting, what they're already getting, $1269. And so, instead of asking for $400,000, that override question would have only been $200,000. And it might have only been 25 cents a thousand on the tax rate versus a 50 cents. You see what I'm saying? That July 24 proposed budget has to be nuked. If you nuke it, all the departments get this money on the right. They keep it. They don't lose it on that July 24 vote. So, they're all starting from a higher level of funding, which was the initial budget. The only thing that threw that off was the 900,000 assessment.
Which is still out there.
Which has got a solid tactical plan today, being its own override question, all right? That if it passes, the issue is resolved. If it doesn't, it goes to super-town meeting, and will be fought on the floor there. We will lose that battle. It'll come back. You will certify. FAA will certify it. We will defeat it at town, because, right, we will defeat it at the subsequent town meeting where we have to approve it still.
No, I think, I could be wrong.
And then the state says you still don't have a certified budget December. And then the state says you still don't have a certified budget December.
Look out the fur, but everything I've seen through the emails is, if it passes at the super town meeting, you, Dudley has lost their ability to say no, to appeal. That's the bill, period.
That's absolutely correct.
And you said before, if, is that a capital I or a small i? Because we're, we're looking at a capital I. The best, you know, we don't have the, the bottom line, we don't have the right to go back, we, the voters, don't have the right to go back and say, the super town meeting said yes, we're saying no, ha, ha, ha. Once it goes through, we're done, John, you can't, you can't appeal, you can't say anything.
But you still have to get that new budget approved at town meeting, and we can vote? No, it's uncharted ground, yes we can. You have to approve it. As the board of selectmen, you will approve it and certify it, because that is your duty. You will present it to town meeting.
No, John, it's over at that point, the 901 is over.
The budget still ha, budget still have to be approved at town meeting.
Minus 901, we can't say no to the schools after the super town meeting, you think we can, we can't?
That's when the state steps in, because they say this is unresolvable between the towns. That's why they have the provision for the state to step in.
It may, it may not happen, but does that, is that what you were advocating?
No, what I'm advocating is, I think there's a solid tactical plan in place today. They, they need to do what they have to do, they have to book that super town meeting. I think having that separate override vote specifically for the assessment is going to pass. Okay? If it doesn't, then it's the super town you vote, so then at that point, they say you gotta pay it. Then we, if you don't wanna fight with the state, which I say, let's make the second revolution start right here in Dudley, if that's the case. But if you don't, if you're not up to battling with the state, then at that point, say, guys, that budget that was gonna nuke our town on 7/24, that has to now be in place.
Let me, I wanna ask Mr. Matthew a question, if I could. What is the mechanism? If the super town meeting passes, let, let's say this goes to the super town meeting, Dudley loses. What is the mechanism for collection of those funds? Is, is it an order from the, from the state? Is, is there like contempt proceedings in court? How does that money get collected if, if the budget wasn't approved?
What I'm aware of is, if super town meeting, um, votes to approve the school assessment, then Dudley is legally responsible for that assessment. I believe Dudley Town Council has sent emails indicating that. Um, that's every piece of information that we've received from the state. Uh, whether or not, I, I don't know what the mechanism is, if Dudley said, no, we're not gonna pay this. Um, it's, that probably is uncharted territory. But cer, certainly other communities, um, with regional schools, with two members, have gone through the super town meeting, and it's, again, the, you know, 50 plus one vote. And if the school assessment, uh, is passed, then Dudley is legally responsible for it.
And the town side, is it that minus 901, plus 10%?
Mr. Chair. They withhold it from the state aid. That's how, that's how they would get the reimbursement, they would withhold it from the state aid.
What Mr. Breyer said is, one of the, one of the remedies is, you don't get free cash certified, they withhold it from state aid, that sort of-
Don't set that tax rate, we can't collect taxes.
But we specifically had a call with town council, Mr. Mayor and I did today, for that specific question, discussed that specific strategy. And the super meeting, district meeting, is, is designed specifically to legally break the stalemate, when it comes down to it. Whether it's three or four town districts, or two town districts, you can't have one town holding the other one back, or pushing the other one forward. It specifically is designed to ma, and it's legally binding that it breaks the stalemate. So that's why we, that's why we are following the timeline that, that was laid out legally. From the time that we receive the new voted assessment, I think we had the town, I, I believe that the, the town voted the override, I think it was June 13th. On June 14th, the school committee met, because their assessment was predicated on a passed override, so they didn't have an appropriation. They met, they voted the, the new assessment of 10,937,991, and they hand delivered it to me the following day. This becomes a bill, this is not, we, we can't look at this as though, we can't look at this as if it's a town department that we can, we can, you know, tell Dean to cut this and cut that, and front load this and front load that. That's a, that's a bill. And from the time that this is voted, we have 45 days to hold a special town meeting, to make the adjustment, to balance our new budget. And that's, that meets the legal requirement that was presented to me. Balance the legal budget, you have 45 days to do it. The reason that a super meeting can't be called in advance of the 45 days, is because the law allows towns to say, go to the town meeting and balance your budget. Before a super meeting can be called, in order to vote between Charlton and Dudley to take the assessment.
Mr. Sullivan, I might've interrupted you, I, I apologize for that, please, go ahead.
No, 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 I, I, I think that clarifies what we've been trying to say, that this is, once again, we go through this, people don't wanna believe town council. We could have the person sit there for 250 hours and tell us that person. Mr. Ruda got it on the phone, and I know Mr. Matthew was nodding, that's, that's why our meeting is in July, their potential meeting is in August. But then if, worst case scenario, we have another one subsequent to that, we are forced to balance the budget. Unless we take, Mr. Breyer suggested, of course, and ignore it, and not pay the bill, and see what happens next.
Well, I, I, I think, I think you've, you've just kinda given another, another option here. So, if you, right? Instead of totally nuking the proposed, the proposed budget, that, you know, that incorporates the assessment in it. What we do is, we, we move forward with the May 22, with the amendment, that simply, you know, assumes that the, right? The May 22 incorporates that 60,000 figure that we talked about in revenue to get, help balance, cause it's gotta be balanced. And then, that override question, this one here that you're looking at, alright? It starts with this one here. What we, what we could do is say, right? This is contingent, so this is the existing budget, and this is contingent upon a successful override. This is balanced, right? So if the town approves this, and the override's successful, you've already have an approved town budget. And you can certify, and everyone can move on, and everyone's life is good. Now, let's just say the override fails, we could put a third contingent column, or a second contingent column, that says, if the override fails, there's the contingency. It's the burn your town to the ground scenario. So you see what I'm saying?
We have to have a balanced budget.
Yeah, and it would be.
As we stand today.
520, I see what you're saying. He's saying that you go to the town meeting, and you put in a contingent budget with a successful override, and then a contingent budget with a non-successful.
Exactly.
So we do a contingent to the contingent, cause you said put a second column.
Just the, the two outcomes. So you keep the May 22 budget, right? And then you have contingent A, successful override, contingent B, failure of override. And the numbers will be dramatically different.
Doesn't that just put out for three weeks what may or may not occur if, if the override doesn't pass?
Yeah, so people have a very clear picture of, if I vote for the override, these are my budgetary numbers for all my departments. And if I vote against the override, these are the numbers that are playing in, which is your burn down the town numbers.
And so we have a balanced budget regardless of what happens.
Regardless of what happens.
Okay. What, one question that I have been receiving a lot of, that people are confused about, is with the override amount for the schools. In, in what was proposed for the budget, that the schools were, was included with the 901. They thought that we were then asking for like, now going to 1.8, which we're not. So I think people just need to understand, if that was the case, what would happen?
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Ruda, so, thanks for bringing that up and reminding me that-
Yep.
That was a thing at one point. The override questions are to fund the school assessment, to fund the fire department, fund public safety, police and fire, fund the library. And it has to be applied for that specific use for, for the first year under the law. So if everything failed, and only the library passed, library must receive every penny of that in the first year. But it's to fund the assessment. This is our bill, we have a known number for the assessment, 10,937. It doesn't say we're gonna give the additional, we're gonna put 901,000, it doesn't say to increase, or increase the assessment. It says to fund the assessment, so that portion of 901 goes to that assessment number to fund it. And the 901 from the special town meeting gets readjusted in October, and, and, and put back into stabilization, municipal budgets and so forth. So I think from what Mrs. Carmen Yani is bringing up, the question is, do they get, if the override passes for the schools, is there an additional 901,000 on top of the 10.9 added to it? The answer is no.
And we were not expecting that.
Yeah, and, oh, and I know.
Right.
Oh, please. No, no, it's, so, it's, it's applied to the assessment. It takes the burden of the nuclear option Armageddon budget that Mr. Breyer is talking about, which is a terrible, awful, destructive road to, road to nowhere budget, that we're proposing in July, because we have to balance. It takes that 901,000 that it used to balance the budget, and it returns it to a 10% reduction level across the board for all departments. Bearing in mind that 534,000 has been used to be applied for that budget. So even with the 10% reduction, and that money's come from stabilization, so even with that 10% reduction, in the following year, the money that we've put towards it from stabilization this year, will be gone next year. So that is another compelling reason to really consider what the long-term strategy is here.
Mr. Breyer, sir.
Yeah, no, thanks, Mr. Ruda, for bringing up the department versus the bill scenario, I think that was one thing that, I, I get that a lot, is, you know, pushback on the school. I said, it's a bill, it's not a, you know, rearrange some stuff in the department, so I wanted, I'm glad that, that's out there. And I think what we've really talked through here, John, and I really appreciate you coming in and making everybody think and hear it, cause we are open to this, we ask for people to come and help. Cause, because of tight timeframes, because of the, you know, shifting revenue numbers, because that's just how it works, right? What I've learned today is, there's more than one way to get to the same result, right? And what, why we picked to put, and I'm gonna put the school on the spot, would you rather have this in the July budget or out?
Would I rather have-
Knowing, well, knowing that, I ask for a reason, right? So, knowing that, um, again, we, we, we have to like represent everybody, and we can't like, on ifs, I would, Johnny, logic is sound. Override should pass the school, based on all the arguments that have been made for that, what if it didn't? Alright, that's my, my biggest fear. And I, I've said it a couple times up here, I'm like, I, I cannot and will not have another town dictate what happens to Dudley. I can't, none of us can, in this room, or any people listening, can't happen. We have to figure it out together, okay? And that's why, this, this budget sucks. This July budget is terrible, nobody wants this. But I, I'm appealing to the people listening, that, like, you have a choice. Funds, fund some things. And that the school gets their money, the fu, the, the rest of the departments get their money. And then we're able to like, you know, wipe, wipe, wipe our brow and start over again next year, cause that's exactly what's gonna happen, right? So we need to solve this, and we, by law, have to have a balanced budget. And I just, it's, is this safer? Probably, I mean, yeah. It would also make the school have to work a little harder, wouldn't it? To take it out of the budget and hadn't have to really, really, really need an override to pass, right? Because then the town needs the really, really override to pass.
I just wanna clarify, we have, we are working on the 112 budget.
Oh, I know, I know, but I'm saying, but I'm saying, numbers being what it is, that we, everybody needs it to happen.
Right.
Right, so I mean, it's not just like, the, the town is choosing, and always has chosen, chosen to fund the school, always. Rich, we've always worked together, last how many years, to make sure that the assessments, and then some were made.
Every year it's been a negotiation, every year the target is a two and a half type percent increase for, uh, to the Dudley assessment, and that usually is what drives the overall budget number.
Right.
In my time at Dudley-Charlton, we've made reductions almost each and every year to meet that number, and they've been able to be, to be done, you know? Oh yes, we can lose that piece, we can lose this piece. And it's always doing more with less, and, and that's, there's nothing wrong with that.
Oh.
You know, it should be worn as a, as a badge of honor and courage. Um, unfortunately, in fiscal '24, what we're facing is our, probably our largest budgetary increase ever, in the 50 years of the district.
That's right. So I mean, here we are, we're here.
Yeah. So, so would you agree with me, that the July 24 budget that's being proposed is Armageddon, for the most part, for the town?
Yeah.
Right? So why would we abandon our existing 522 budget, that has a vehicle, if simply amended, for the 900,000 override?
Where's it gonna come from?
From the override.
No, no, we can't, we can't do it like that, John, to propose a new budget.
But that's the way it's set up.
No, to propose a new budget.
I'm not proposing a new budget.
To amend the budget, you just said, to give them the 900.
No.
You just said that.
No, to take it out.
So, so on the 522 budget, the only dispute is the 900,000 with the schools. That's the only dispute.
10% kinda hurts too, by the way.
Yeah, I know, I, yeah, but, but as far as the town meeting goes, the reason why it's not in balance is because of 900,000, can't be certified, right? There's no doubt that departments have taken cuts, but it's 900,000. So, if, if you simply amend that budget with the contingent column as outlined here, and you add a successful override, you have your balanced budget. If the override fails, and that's where you, you came up with the third option, and I can easily incorporate it, if you'd like, is I can take the numbers directly from the Armageddon budget, and create another contingent column. So that if the override passes, this is your balanced budget? If the override fails, this is your Armageddon balanced budget? And everything's solved.
Can I ask a question?
It's a, it's a restatement of what we have, though, right? Just presented differently.
You have, if you have five different override questions, that's a lot of contingent budgets, correct? Because you can't, if, if you have people that vote yes for one, but say no for the schools, we can't then cut that person's budget, because they just voted yes for that. So it's untouchable at that point, correct?
Correct. Yes, that's right, Captain.
And, and that's, and, and so, is there any way, at this point in time, to pull or amend any of the override questions? Legally?
Mr. Ruda? You know the days, you know?
We're, we're just beyond the, the ability, our ability to do that at this point.
Just beyond, that's what I thought, like, like a day or two. Because the solution would've been just to have a single override vote on the schools, and then, you know, once you, you have your budgets, then actually figure out each department, or whatever, and then, and then do your general government override down the road. Uh, so with, right now, that, I mean, I could, I could, I have to take a little bit of time to think about, how do you incorporate the possibility of successful overrides for each one? In one sense, you'd almost have, oh my gosh, it gets, it gets exponential.
That was the whole point of the meeting last month, let people know, this is what, this is what's coming. If A doesn't happen, B happens. And to do a contingent to a, to a, do a contingent to a contingent, I mean, it was confusing enough at the first town meeting.
Uh, but, but there's a difference here.
I, I see you, I'll get to you in a minute, sir.
I'm sorry, right? We can't, you can't manage their budget. But all these other contingencies are still part of the general government. So amongst yourselves, if for some reason, I mean, so you might have to call a second town meeting, right? So if you do this based upon a balanced budget, right? The only thing you don't have control over is that school. If you do this, and it passes, right? So we do the contingent and the non-contingent, right? Armageddon. But let's just say a couple override questions do come through, and they get additional funding, all you need to do is amend the Armageddon- all you need to do is amend the Armageddon column if you, if that override pass, fails. If the override passes, then it's just a matter of saying, okay, guys, this is the funding, how do we redo our municipal budget? And then you just bring it in.
You can't, because if, say, schools will pass, school's going to get their money, so let's take the nine oh one out of it.
Okay.
Public safety, highway, library, town hall.
Yep.
If, everything fails except town hall, we'll just say, the only thing you change is that one line, town hall. You can't take that hundred and thirty, I was going to say one forty, and say, we're going to give forty to the police, forty to the highway. There is no contingency to move it around, you have to pay that first year where it's voted. And then going forward, it's no longer dedicated. The hope would be, as a municipality, schools, we would say, okay, that one thirty six, thirty four stays with the town. No guarantee, and, you know, we can allocate it anywhere we want, which technically be against the will of the voters. So I, I see what you're saying, John.
But instead of tapping free cash for the fire department, now you've got that free cash. That's what I'm saying is, because it's part of the general fund, you guys can tactically look at this and say, okay, this is what we're resulting. And then all you're doing is submitting a, a new budget that needs a simple town meeting vote to get it in balance for anything additional that might come in. But at least, the elephant in the room is taken care of, which is the school override, you've got a balanced budget. Well, if it falls out of balance because you've got more money for a department, that's a better problem to have than the other problem.
The nine oh one's going to fall, it's either going to fall in July or it's going to fall in August.
Yeah.
If the other four fail, you're still looking at the nine oh one, which is what we spent, these guys spent hours going over what we presented. So, as Kerry said, hope's not a strategy, yeah, we hope it passes, the nine oh one's going to pass, I'm pretty sure at some point.
But that's where we, we create that third contingency column, or the second contingency column, and it's not, hope isn't a strategy, I agree. But tactically, I think, at this point in time, that people are going to approve the school override. The other budget questions, because of the amounts, I think most of them are going to fail, I think all of them are going to fail. The only thing I think is going to pass is the school, because the amounts are too high. Now, if they were based on the May twenty second budget, and they would have been cut in half, I think they would have had a better shot.
But that's just an arbitrary number, you just said, wait, you haven't participated in any budget discussion until tonight. So for you to come in and say arbitrarily cut that number in half, why can't I say cut it by twenty five percent?
I, I'm not saying cut the number in half.
You did, you just said cut.
I'm using your own numbers, Steve.
Right, you said cut the override request in half.
The five twenty two is your approved budget. What was cut, right, if you go back to the original budget, that contingent column, the override question should have reflected that amount on the right column the most in their override questions. But they didn't base the override questions on the five twenty two budget, they based it on the Armageddon budget. Yeah? Yep?
No, we had the ten percent cut, and then, and the override question was to restore what the school was looking for as, as part of their five-year plan, the first one.
So I'll give you a perfect example, I'm going to use library because we had the situation. So in the five twenty two budget, the library was funded three hundred and sixty thousand. In the contingent column, what they wanted was forty nine thousand. So if you would have done a library override for forty nine thousand, I think people would have gone for that. But their new number, that three sixty nine, is based on the Armageddon number, because they were only funded sixty two thousand dollars. Follow me?
Because we had to do a budget.
But you're saying is nuke it.
That presented a.
You don't need it, you don't need this budget.
Temporarily keep the library open from July first.
There's no reason, fully funded.
Hopefully we'll get the numbers.
But they're fully funded.
Can you explain how the vote failed, sorry, I didn't.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Please, Mr. Ruda.
So, um, the five twenty two budget is still absolutely in effect.
Yep.
It's nine hundred and one thousand dollars out of balance. The law requires the town to balance the budget, that's why we're having a special town meeting. Before we can certify, I mean, before we can set the new tax rate, which occurs end of October, beginning of November. It has to be done, that's the legal requirement is to come up with a balanced budget. So, there are a lot of things that, so, so it's fine to say five twenty two is still in effect. But the eight hundred pound gorilla in the room is, you're nine hundred and one thousand dollars out of whack. So the, the moving forward instruction to anyone cannot be, spend as though you have this amount of money when you clearly do not have this amount of money. You have to, you have to reduce spending. In anticipation that you're going to have a balanced budget before the end of October, when it comes time to set the new tax rate. You have to, you have to just deal with the knowns as opposed to the unknowns, and that's what we're doing. Everything, everyone is, I mean, Mr. Breyer is saying, makes sense on some level. What the board has chosen to do makes sense on a very practical level. It all makes sense, but we have to deal with what is known. Five twenty two is out, the five twenty two budget is nine hundred and one thousand dollars out of balance. I can't tell the fire chief to spend overtime like he's got this amount of money, or the police chief like he's got this amount of money, when we know in two weeks he won't have that amount of money. And we'll have to wait until the next vote, the third override attempt in ninety days, we'll have to hope that it passes. We can't operate like that, we have to operate with the knowns. So, it's fine to say five twenty two budget is still in effect. But there are things that have to happen no matter what to accommodate what may happen. That's notice, for example, to police and firefighters that are being laid off. Of, the, just giving notice under collective bargaining agreement, sometimes, well, in the case of police and fire, it requires at least four weeks of advanced notice and a meeting for the Fire CBA, that's required to happen. When you give notice that somebody's being laid off, a lot of other things happen. Sometimes, the, the firefighter says, I've got something else lined up, I'm going to take another job because I'm not dealing with this anymore. I'm going to resign in advance of that.
That's what happened at the school, that's what the.
You know, or, or, it's a cause and effect, it's not something that can be, can be controlled and you can operate in such a manner that you pretend something exists that doesn't, that doesn't actually exist, there are a lot of different factors that come into it. So when the fire chief comes up and, and he says he's already got somebody laid off, the natural question is, but why? It's still under the five twenty two budget. That, because there's a lot of stuff that happens when you notice someone, and when you have a new assessment, and when you have a budget out of balance, and all the other ramifications that come along with the situation that we're in. It's not just as easy to say, operate as though you're under a budget that is, at this point, out of balance and largely pretend.
Thank you, because there's a gentleman who was patient, he had his hand up for quite a while. Sir, is there a question or comment about this?
Excellent, uh, your name and address?
Jerry Frank, thirteen Causeway Road in Dudley.
Yes, sir.
So, um, I, the first thing is, we're talking about this Armageddon budget, and I think that, um, that shouldn't even be included the way it is now, because if the library is, if we have that, or maybe, or maybe I'm wrong on this, but if we do, if that is an option, and the library's not funded, then is the town, does the town have to pay back that two point six million dollars plus thirteen years' interest? In which case, if that passes, what you're proposing, you might as well cut half the fire department out and half the, um, police department and who knows what else? So that's my first question is, what is the story on this two point six million dollars? And why, and if it is something we have to pay, why are we even thinking about it?
For, for that, Mr. Chairman, for that to have been put out in the way that it was, with the immediacy that it was, was absolutely incorrect, it didn't come from this board, it didn't come from, didn't come from my office. We had town council contact the state to advise them of the situation that we're in. And part of that advice was that we're not going to really have a budget appropriated for FY twenty four until at least October. So there's absolutely, and, and the state confirmed, thanks for letting us know, we're aware of it. We're not, there's, there's no immediacy to pay back anything, because we can't report to the state that the library hasn't been funded in FY twenty four. We don't know what the status is for the library budget right now. So to, to, to have brought that level of panic to everyone was absolutely incorrect. It should never have happened, but it did. To answer your question plainly, no, we don't have to pay back two point six million dollars in sixty days.
Would we have to if we funded the library at sixty two thousand?
The, the proposition of funding the library at sixty two thousand is in the, is in the budget that's being proposed for the July twenty fourth town, uh, special town meeting. To provide enough funding, more than enough funding to bring us the August seventeenth vote for the override.
Yeah, but the August seventeen vote is for sixty two thousand, so if, whether, if it passes.
The, no, the August seventeenth vote.
No, no, I'm sorry, the, if the July vote passes for sixty two thousand, then the state, we have to pay the two point six million, if that holds, if we don't get the override. So why even, why even do that, that's something that.
We haven't, we haven't gone as deep, because we don't have an appropriation for twenty four, we don't have, we haven't gone as deep as to say what the timeline would be, what would actually need to be paid off, what wouldn't have to be paid off. If they would even say, you know, we'll waive it for another, for another override attempt, we don't know those answers right now. But there's nobody standing there with a bill saying, two point six million dollars, please, because we haven't even settled our FY twenty four budget.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I think I'm going one step beyond what Mr. Breyer is saying, is that, include, have the budget there, um, you know, that's got to be included in, it's got to be included in the Armageddon budget, it's got to be included in every budget that's proposed, because if not, we're closing the town down. I, I don't even understand how, why it's there, and then my question beyond that is, if it's there, and if it does pass, and there isn't an override, the override doesn't pass, are, is the town stuck paying two point six million? I mean, it sounds like almost every case, every scenario here is saying that this, proposing this is just suicide.
Well, worse than closing the library, if it doesn't pass, then there are, there are, there are other factors beyond the library being closed that we're going to have to deal with. It's not just if the library passes or not, it's if we can, where we're going to be in FY twenty five with a, with a new school assessment.
Mr. Ruda, could you hold for a minute? If, if anyone wants to have a discussion, could you please go outside? The bikes are really sensitive and it's picking it up, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Ruda?
I, I, I understand, the, the purpose behind putting sixty two thousand dollars into the, the budget in July is to make sure there's sufficient money in that budget to either keep it limping along until we have the, keep the lights on. Specifically, that's, that was the feedback, the town council going, keep the lights on until the override is voted, and we'll take it from there. So we want to make sure there's enough funding in there. We want to make sure it wasn't just a matter of turning the lights off, turning off utilities and we're out. We still haven't had FY twenty four appropriation. We don't know how the dominos will fall in terms of having to pay back anything, some of it, none of it. We don't know, because we don't know what the next strategy is after that, to be quite honest with you.
Okay, so my question's kind of a yes or no, what I think I'm looking for, is regardless of, of how the override goes for the library or the budget for the library, regardless of how it goes, don't we need to fund it at three hundred and eighty thousand dollars so that we're not at risk of losing two point six million? I mean, I, no matter what, I'm saying, why, why not just fund it? If we need to fund it, or we're going to lose that money?
I think, because I think to answer the question, we don't know, we don't know at this point if it's a matter of delaying funding for the library in order to avoid two point six million, or if it must be immediately funded right now, or within the next two weeks. That, does that better answer the question?
No, 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 it's just.
Uh, excuse me.
Okay, maybe I'll go to, I've, I've got a, I'm not wording this right, maybe somebody else will, but I've got, can I have one other question here? Is there some other, this is more to Mr. Breyer, you brought up the police and fire departments, because they have some big, um, increases here, not big increases, but, you know, um, but what about, there, there's a few other departments that have hu, you know, as big, or, you know, administration is a hundred and seventy one percent, and municipal expenses are a hundred and thirty eight percent, I mean, those are much bigger than what the.
I believe the administration was, was for newly created positions, combined, Mr. Ruda, is that correct?
Administration never existed before, until after COVID. We had, um, two positions, well, we had five positions split up among the building department, zoning, uh, planning, that sort of thing, it was all split up. So now it was codified into two positions and there were, there were two full-time positions added under a new budget headline, which was administration.
So they were positions that were somewhere else that got combined and moved into administration?
That's right, we also had regulatory compliance paid for through the.
That's important for him to finish the rest of that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ruda, finish, I apologize. I couldn't hear, I'm hearing background.
It included regulatory compliance around that cap landfill for the groundwater issues and the things that the town didn't pay for and didn't test for decades. When we went to put, put solar on the landfill, um, we have to have a DEP permitted, uh, sign off. DEP said, let's see your testing since two thousand and one, when the final cap was put on that landfill. We didn't have any, we never followed through, mostly because we didn't want to spend the money on it. So now, we were under an emergency response action, which absolutely requires that we spend, well, five hundred thousand dollars so far in regulatory and compliance issues, we're putting filtration systems in and around private wells on Eagle Drive, and we're under that, that DEP guideline that requires us to do that. Same with dam inspections, we delayed dam inspections for decades. Now all the dams that we thought were great to accept for free, and were given to us, now are costing the taxpayer a lot of money, because they have to be mitigated, they have to be tested. If they fall within a certain category, we have to find grant funding, which we're beginning to do, which is now going to be delayed, in order to mitigate the dams that we own, that we inherited. Same deal with, uh, stormwater. Never, we never took care of our stormwater catch basins the way we should have. They caught up and, and, and they caught up to us. Another example under administration, and then I'll stop, because there's many more. We never had a proper maintenance agreement for this building, for HVAC system. Tight and cold, changeover every season, ongoing routine maintenance. Routine maintenance seems to be the, the, the call of the voters, that, that's something they absolutely have no tolerance for. When you defer maintenance, it ends up becoming a huge bill. When we went and looked at, when, when I came in and we looked at what our maintenance program was for this building, to maintain our HVAC system, we said we did it in an in-house, and Jeff came in, he went in and looked and went up there and all of the grease fittings, still had paint on them, they've never been greased. As simple as it gets greasing the system, could have cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars if we didn't start budgeting the eighteen thousand dollars required annually to properly maintain and service the system. That fell under administration as well. So the increase, the spending spree that you see under administration is not necessarily this kind of spending spree that you're trying to elude, that people are trying to elude to, the spending spree is for maintenance, regulatory compliance, grants, combining positions and adding efficiencies. Does that answer your question?
Mr. Sullivan?
I just want to bring that point up again, I've done it previously, and Mr. Ruda touched on it. People seem to think we have a ton of part-time people collecting benefits. At one time, we did have a few, as part of a strategy he presented to us as a board, we voted on. We combined six into three, planning conservation, highway, which is more like a land use, and code enforcement, building, zoning, border health, and an assistant town council, I take it back, we had seven. So those people became benefited, that's where their salaries are. But we took off at least four, I believe, part-timers that were receiving benefits. So, again, I know, I don't put Rich on the spot all night, that's the savings for the town, because we're using benefits for two people as opposed to more. And everything he said was true, and I've been, I've been around for most of it, and I'll take the hit, because I've been here the longest. But I don't know when we're supposed to look at dams, I don't know when we have to do compliance at the landfill. I mean, that, that was capped when I was not even involved. And I did bring it up before, we got dinged on stormwater management, the two administrations ago, and that kind of became like a little catch every year. We got this done, right, we got the paperwork and come to find out. and that kinda became like a little catch every year. We got this done, right? We got the paperwork and come to find out, we didn't. So all this stuff, like he, like someone called it a spending frenzy, and he just said, it, stuff that we spent was bringing us into the 21st century of compliance. There was no, no extravagant, you know, gilded paintings and gold, gold handles. It was stuff that the town needed and the stuff the town had to do. And now it's, now it's a revolving cost. The maintenance, we're on our second heating system, at least our second, in a 20-year-old building. Again, shame on us, I guess, because we didn't go up there and look at the grease fittings, but, you know, a person comes in, has got a little bit of experience and knowledge, and all of a sudden, it looks like we're spending money like drunken sailors, and all we're trying to do is catch up to where we need to be.
Mr. I know I've already taken up a lot of your time, and I brought this, you know, forward because uh, I was hoping to actually, i- if we could agree to nuke this Armageddon budget and just simply take it off the table and move forward with this amended budget contingent, with the contingency that the override passed, this solves everything if passed. All right? And it would be a lot easier for us to agree now that we are gonna get rid of this Armageddon budget. That it simply does not exist and will not exist. And if the override fails, and if we lose the super town meeting vote, then at that point, you're gonna have to actually say, what is the Armageddon budget? So we just make this disappear. Because if, if we could agree now to do that, we go into the town meeting unified, and it could literally be a five-minute town meeting, where all I do is I go up there and I, and I would just read this on the floor, right? Changes, right? The motion to reject the proposed 724 2023 budget, but rather amend the already approved 522 23 budget, FY 24, to reflect the following changes. Change the revenue number from 522, from 25182810 to 25244598. And the reason for that is that is the number that you put on your Armageddon budget. I'm simply amending that 522 budget to match the new numbers that you guys have already put. Didn't create these numbers. So I just wanna make sure that we're all using the same numbers. And then at that point, I simply do increase the library amount from 360,000 to 370 by transferring 10,000. Again, give the cushion, just in case, it, you know, because that three-year average, we don't want them to lose any aid, any possibility of anything like that, right? And then the 51,000, move that to stabilization, and then I add the contingent column to the 522 budget for a successful override. If the override passes for the school, your issue is resolved. All right? The library's permanently off the table as well if I do this maneuver. Now let's just say some other overrides pass. That's a good problem for you to have. Okay? Let's say the override fails. Okay, which is, which is some of your, you say, we gotta deal with what we know. We're dealing with the same speculation on the negative side as I'm trying to promote on the positive side, right? What we know today is the 522 budget is the budget. Everything else is speculation.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chair. We have to, we have to balance with the assessment number. We can't ignore the 901.
Oh, no. Oh, no. It's still in dispute. So it goes to super town meeting.
How do you account for that at the July meeting? We're just gonna tell them we're not gonna fund it?
No. I have it in, in the contingent column.
You have the 901?
Yes.
So where's the makeup on the town side?
There is none because it's contingent on the override. That's what I'm saying. So if it fails, we still have the 522 budget in place with the 900,000 still, not out of balance, it's in dispute. And it goes to super town meeting.
Still out of balance, John. You could call it in if you want. We're out of balance.
It's a disputed number.
Well, yeah, but, but it's not disputed, we have to pay it. Who's disputing it?
No, because if you push it all the way to the brink, they're forced to, at FY 23 levels. And they're already gonna be six months into it, and the damage is already done.
We'll be four months into it, and our damage will be done.
That's what I'm saying. And we can get out of it tonight.
I'm talking about.
We can get out of it with this, the people will support the override for the school, for the assessment.
I appreciate your, I appreciate your optimism.
Yeah, and, and it would just be a much cleaner town meeting, and if everyone's on the same page, where if we go there, this proposed budget is just gone. It's like it doesn't exist anymore. We go in with this budget here with the contingency, with the override, all right? We see, if it passes, everybody's happy, right? And, and now you can get back to business and figure out, okay, what other overrides passed or failed? You can work with the police and fire and say, let's get better visibility on what you really anticipate, right? Highway, right? Poor highway, guys are always forgotten about, but yeah, right? The snow and ice can just absolutely decimate them, right? So I'm telling you, this is the way out. This is the path out. And it's simple, and if we could do it as a team, and I don't have to go up there, it'd be a lot easier to say, yes, the border selectmen, support this amendment, right? FAA supports it, we vote, and we're out of there in five minutes. And then the voters decide. And they vote for the override. Yeah.
This is Carmen Yanni. And then there's a gentleman in the back after you.
I'm just wondering, I can understand the board's hesitancy with it. I'm wondering, and I, I don't wanna speak for you, but I'm just wondering if there's a kind of a mutual compromise to make. You had mentioned before about the contingent with the override, almost having two contingent budgets so that the schools included in both budgets contingent, like contingent with the override for the school passing, contingent without it passing. So that the school receives their funds, and then that way, you don't ever have to go to the super town meeting.
Kathy, I think if the voters, through the chair, I'm sorry. I forgot Robert's rules there for a second. That's the Italian part of me, the passion part. I think if the voters refuse to pass this override, they're looking for a rumble at town meeting. They want it. I don't think they do. I don't think that we need that third, I don't think we need that second contingent column anymore if it fails. I think if they vote no, they want to go to super. They wanna take it on.
Can I, can I ask through the chair? Can I ask this?
This is Carmen Yanni, go ahead.
It, I'm just thinking, if you had that availability to have those two options on the, on a contingent ballot, I mean, on the contingent for the override, then that would allow us to do some planning so that we're not waiting until, like, we're not waiting it out. Like, if we know that come the override, that we are getting that 901 no matter what, I'm not calling a super town meeting. I can work with the state to see if they'll allow us to hire back some of our people based on this, this vote at the town meeting. That's some items that I was thinking of.
Anyone?
How's it work on our side? Do we get to plan like we're gonna get the funds and call our people back? We can't.
Correct.
We can't.
But regardless of which way you look at it, this is a, there was a gentleman in the back, blue shirt, you were quite patient. Sir, this is about the discussion at hand with the budget?
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind sharing your name and address?
My name is David Cedar. I'm, I live at 55 New Boston Road in Dudley.
Thank you, go ahead.
I wanted to make a comment about what Mr. Mead said at the last meeting. I didn't attend the meeting, but I did watch the video. And he, and he made what I think is a really salient point, which is, if you go back with these five questions, they total up to the same amount that have already been rejected, I think you've just set the town up for failure. So I think, Mr. Dry, is it, Mr. Dryer, I apologize, if I get your name wrong. Has a pretty sound idea. If there is any way to come back, you know, to the voters and just, with just the override for the school, I think that would be the way to go. Mr. Ruda, you had said that we were past the timeline where we could take those four other questions off. But is there any way to do that? Can, can we cancel this planned July 24th meeting and schedule something slightly later, later, and put Mr. Dryer's proposal in, into play?
The selectmen can call a town meeting anytime they wish to.
And I would suggest, gentlemen, that you give that very serious consideration, because I really think that if you're asking for the same exact things that you've been asking for before, just in a different format, it's gonna fail. And it, and you said real crap shoot as to which one of those might get, might get passed.
I, I understand. It's a little, it's about 10% less. I, I, I know my numbers aren't accurate. It's about that, and it's split into a menu. And, and if we did change the town meeting date, would we be able to change the override date, amounts? Is, is this even, would this even be possible to do at this, at this timeline?
No, the election has been called, and we're, we're now past the date where you can not do that and change the timeline for that.
So that's, that's set in stone, the, the override election, correct?
Yes.
So I, what, I'm trying to follow your train of thought. What are you looking to change as far as the town meeting?
I've been listening to Mr. Dryer this evening and, and Mr. Mead from the previous meeting. Both of whom are pretty much saying that the chances of these five items passing are pretty slim. It seems, it seems pretty obvious to me because they're pretty darn close. The numbers are pretty close to what they were before.
They're a little different and they're separate, Mr.?
No, they're, through the chair, the, the four town ones are over 150,000 dollars less.
Well, I, then I, I apologize for.
You know, they, they cut, they, they, the town, the departments actually cut another whatever to get, to get to that number.
On top of the 10.
On top of the 10, they already cut, so they're, that's why we're giving people the menu option to choose that.
Still speaking as a voter, to have those, those, have five items that have to be approved in order for the town to go forward just seems, it seems unlikely that that would be successful. May I make one comment about the, the library?
Go ahead.
We've been talking, obviously, the budget is the big deal about the library, and it's, and it's a huge thing. I, I get all of that. But we gotta remember that the kids really need this library also. I was listening to another meeting for them, from the school board, indicating that the school libraries aren't what they used to be either, which makes the town libraries even that much more important. So I would really consider, I'd really like to ask you, gentlemen, to do everything you can to make sure that the library moves forward. And Mr. Ruda, the gentleman who was up here earlier, and someone from the previous meeting also, asked the same question, and it hasn't really been answered yet, which is, will we eventually have to pay that 2.6 million back to the state if we do in fact ultimately close the library? Whether it's 60 days from now, six months from now, your next year? Is that something that we would have to pay back?
So through the chair, I mean, it remains a gray area, because the intention here is not to permanently shutter the library and walk away from it. That's never been the intention. So we're moving forward with the intention of not doing that. We're, we're moving forward with some amount of funding, some, another override request, whatever the case may be. Free cash, whatever the case may be, to keep the, the library from having to be closed permanently. So it's premature to say yes to that question, because it's a gray area. It's not a black and white. If A happens, then this will, then B will happen. We don't, we just don't know it this time. We have to ask the question.
Okay, I understand that you're saying, I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I, I understand that you're saying that you're doing what you can to, to make sure the library does either at least reopen or hopefully stay open. But the question is simply, if that doesn't happen, do we have to pay the money back? And if we do, then why in the world are we considering even not funding it at the minimum level that we need to, to keep the library open? That's my question.
Mr. Cedar, I'm gonna kinda answer this with, just from past experience. I, I don't think any of us can say that a fine, well, that's what this is. It's like a fine or a penalty. I don't think any of us can say that it would or wouldn't be implemented. It, it's like the Internal Revenue Service. At the end of the day, it's the person making the decision, sitting behind that desk with the gavel. You can't, there's not 100% certainty. Uh, do we want that to happen? Absolutely not. I, I'm gonna, we can do the library discussion after Mr. Breyer. I just wanna, I don't, I don't wanna get too off track.
All right. So I, I appreciate you giving me so much time, and thank you for helping as well. So just to let you know, at this point, I'm, I am going to continue to push, to amend this on the floor and nuke that budget. All right? It would be great if you can review it, if we could come before town meeting occurs, where if somehow we can be on the same page, because I really feel confident that this, as written, contingent upon the successful's dedicated vote for the assessment of the school is going to pass. And I think, I think people wanna put this whole thing behind them. I think everyone wants to move on, and everyone feels bad for what we're doing at Charlton. It's just, it's gotten, it's gotten to be very ugly, and it's gotta end, right? So this is our way out. So I'm gonna push for this. And I understand you think I'm an optimist and hope is a strategy. But I think you're also, the approach of operating under the doomsday budget, because we said, we deal with what we know here and now. We are bud, we are balanced, except for a 900,000 dispute.
Minus 10%.
Yeah.
I can't keep, can't replace the fact.
No, we're, we're balanced. We have a budget, because that's been approved. Now, I, I'll acknowledge that the 522 budget included your 10% cut. But that's what I'm operating. Would it be great to get those restored? I'm sorry.
Jeff was, had his hand up. Lot of conversation tonight, that's a good thing.
So I guess, um, you know, I'm hearing a lot of the residents asking questions that they have the answer to. Whether they wanna support the library financially or not, and there's a, um, several other departments in town that have to be as well. 535,000 dollars in this, in this budget, or in this question is what it, what would be required to fund my department, the highway department. That would leave me with, uh, three, three employees and one buildings and grounds employee. The other public safety departments as well would have substantial reductions, and I, I just, I don't understand. This is not at all the same thing that was presented before. The funding that, funding level that my department would be left at is a 38, 38% reduction from level funding. 38%. If that's not substantial, I, I don't know what that is. So we're not even talking about, you know, level funding isn't even on the floor. We're talking about pretty much a disaster budget like you, like you're talking about, and you're only talking about numbers. You're not talking about the other effects, and I'm sure the other departments are dealing with the same types of things. Uh, it's, it's a morale issue for all of the employees. Pitting one, one department against another. And, uh, you know, I, I think it's ridiculous to expect that the residents aren't willing to support those departments, the necessary departments that they have to have to operate the town. As, uh, as the town administrator mentioned before, I've been involved in a lot of the stuff with, uh, you know, we've implemented a preventative maintenance program for the town hall. Uh, in the past, that wasn't done. You know, the 18,000 dollars that, uh, is spent in doing that with the preventative maintenance staves off a problem like they had in the past where I think, I, I don't remember what the figures were, but 150,000 dollars, 170,000 dollars that dropped out of the sky with the replacement of a, of the cooling tower because preventative maintenance hadn't been done. So sometimes you have to spend money to be able to save money and, uh, and spend it wisely. So the other things that have, uh, come up as well as the half million dollars because of non-compliance for some of the things. Dams, uh, the capped landfill, uh, compliance testing, all of these things have come up on the town and added as expenses, and all of these things have, have expect, uh, impacted all of the other things that should be normal business as usual with, you know, funding, funding the, the normal business of the, of the departments.
Through the chair. Uh, first, I, I've watched, uh, your work since you've taken over the department, and I, and I, and I think you are a tremendous asset to the town. Uh, the professionalism you brought, I mean, the roads, the man. So I wanna first say personally, I think you're, you're, you're really doing a great job. In regards to the budget, the, the May 22nd budget budgets your department at 899 500. I'm not saying that's enough to fund you. I'm just saying what the number is. The July 4th, or July 24th budget is 704. You make it, your, your department gets 195,000 dollars more by preserving the 522 budget. And it's a lot easier to start. $195,000 more by preserving the 522 budget. And it's a lot easier to start 200,000 up for override numbers because your request just went down by $200,000 because you're already got the money in the budget. So I'm saying, this 724 budget, there is, it's a lose, lose for everybody. There's no reason to do it. The, the time to bring up a 724 budget is if you lose super town meeting. But we, but you guys need to run the town according to the budget that's in place. And I really do feel confident that people are going to step up. They're going to do the school override, I mean, do the assessment. And then when everything shakes out with the other override questions, you guys will have the flexibility to look at his needs and police and fire and do what you do. And not have all of this crazy nonsense going on around you. And so if you don't mind, that's where I get into my action items. Because there are some things we can do right away.
I just wanted to respond a little bit to that. So, you know, I think, I think if that's presented with the, the May 22nd, then that is a recycling of the two votes that have already been taken. Right?
Yeah.
So I, so I don't think you're accurate in saying that, you know, or people that are, are saying, we're just presenting the same old thing over again by, by doing this. This is, this is being submitted as a, as a balanced budget, which is required to do. That's why there's the impact to my, my department, to the police and fire, to the, to the library. From there, the town needs to decide if they want to support those, those services and if they're, if they're going to do that. And I appreciate the comments that, you know, I've, I've tried to do a good job and that, you know, those things I recognize, but I can't do it alone. So I, I do need that support of being able to have a department, have the morale with, with those employees and be able to provide the services. And without that, I'm not going to be able to do that. So that's pretty much.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Dreyer?
And so to the final part of my thing, so I, I'm going to move forward. It'd be great if we could figure something out before the actual town meeting. Because I, I really think that's the way to go and, you know. But on the action items, there's a couple of things that I think has brought us to this point. The Board of Selectmen should immediately establish an audit committee. And, and what this audit committee is, is to do the homework for you to actually see, do we need a real audit? Right? What are any immediate concerns? Do we ask the state order to get involved? Do we ask DOE? Should we hire our own forensic accountants? There are a number of forensic accounting firms right here in town. There are lawyers. I was thinking, if you could dress someone like Peter Fox to just spend 180 days and come back with a recommendation, do we, what's the recommendation of the board? Should we get a full audit? I personally think we, we need an audit. And the reason why is if you look at your revenue paper, our auditor, our auditors' numbers, I think it's like seven and like 13. I don't have them in front of me. But you know that one with the excise tax and the levies? If you look at what Department of Revenue says we collected and actually received, it's different than what our auditor says.
Oh, I didn't.
And so who's auditing our auditor?
I'm just going to go on a limb and say the auditor is professional with a license and a stamp. And you just publicly accused him of not doing his numbers properly.
Nope. I, I, all I'm saying is that there's an inconsistency. And Scanlon is, is basically a boiler room where municipalities basically upload files, they have their pre-programmed software, they import it, they export it into their pre-arranged reports. And then they'll give you quote management recommendations. They'll give you a nice chart saying, okay, this is increased by this and that's increased by that. They may say, oh, you know, we're, we wonder what category this receipt goes into or that receipt goes into. And they sort of reach out to possibly Rich or department head if you give them the authority to do so. And then that department head will go through their stuff and if they've, you know, send it in. That, that's what those, Scanlon and those guys do.
I'm going to defer to Rich because Rich deals with those.
I'm sorry.
Again, I'm fairly confident that Scanlon, if the numbers are wrong, then I'll, I'll take the hit. I'm fairly certain Scanlon knows what they're doing.
Mr. Carvajany, thank you for your involvement tonight.
Good evening. So back to Scanlon CPA, Certified Public Accountants. And it's for compliance. The, the idea is it needs to be done on a regular basis. As far as auditing goes, which direction do you want to go? The classifications of funds, the intake of things? I'd, I'd invite another CPA firm or the, the board to go through and say, for the sake of, of the greater good, send out submissions for CPA and they will probably be very similar. There's, there's a difference between an audit for a tech sector company or something private as opposed to public. All the, all the GASB implementations? There we go. Closer, all right. Sorry about that. I, I'd invite anyone to come in. I think Mr. Ruda alluded to it in his earlier comments. If you receive more than $750,000 in federal funds, there's a separate audit that goes somewhere else. So if there's a question on these things, one of the federal company departments would have had a pushback on it. As far as an inconsistency, as far as a reporting receipts at a local level versus what's being reported from the platform over the DOR, I couldn't speak to it. I'd address it if there was an issue. I know there's always a question when it comes to budgeting, you're going to go through and say, oh, you had a million dollars in excise, but why did we only budget 800,000? Municipal Modernization Act only allows us to go back three years for the collection of excise. Items like that. If, if there's, if there's a call for a more public review of expenditures by someone other than the Board of Selectmen, I'd say that's probably an FAA responsibility. It's a Swiss army knife. If the Board of Selectmen wishes to do so, get five fresh faces to go through the treasures budget. You want to go through Insurance General. Be happy to go through a few years of that. This is it. This is what we're expending it on. We went through and paid the deductible because a window broke or what have you. I signed my name to a whole lot of things. So I, I think I have a little bit of confidence. Sitting at home, it's real easy for somebody to scratch their head and say, hmm, well, yeah. Nobody leaves without a receipt. Everything is sorted out. It's, it's pretty straightforward. So it's probably not too deep of a dive when it comes to an audit. But there's a million and one source documents. I'll tell you, there's at least two big bins filled with, with items. They are uploaded. And then there's always those questions that occur halfway through the audit. Hi, I need to look at payroll deductions for the second week in August. I need to look at, whatever it might be. I could drone for hours, but there is always that. And here are the things that you weren't planning for. And there's usually more than enough backup for it. And the lion's share of the reports, at least from my office, if I hit a hard return on a, on a report, there's a date stamp on it. So I can't go through and start backdating things or anything else like that. When you have all of your months, you have July of 2022, the auditor's taking a look at it. I'm sure the first thing he's looking for is an original bank statement. He's looking at bank statements. Goodness, I'm sure some of the thermal printing things have, have faded, but they're there. And I, I want to sound confident. Don't wish to sound arrogant at all. It's, it's almost, the work is almost done in expectation of its, of its review. Goodness, there's probably duplicates, excessive duplicates, and it's just for that reason. If anything, I think I have some of the two years or three years PDF. Everybody realizes we no longer use Point software. But I have all of those scans that were sent as well. So if there were ever a question, you're trying to tie into three generations worth of numbers. And, you know, at that point.
So I guess a simple question, Mr. Chair. Rich, are you confident that Scanlon has done it, done their job and done it well?
I have, I have no reason to doubt it. I, if, if there's a question, I'd raise it and have it addressed immediately. Your management letter is modest. You know, if, if anything, if you look through the audit, they're going to say the same thing that Standard and Poor's said when they had their call two weeks ago. The budgetary assumptions are amazingly modest. And the idea is that a large portion of the budget is funded very much after that annual town meeting in May. So in addition to a CPA firm, you've got Standard and Poor's. We still have money out with a loan rated by Moody's. So every year or every other year, they're going to go through and take a look at it. So I'm, I'm pretty confident. I, if, if there is a, a public outcry that, you know, find, find Rosellian Clark and have them do an audit. And from the Mass Collectors and Treasures Association, there's a group that specializes in, there's probably four or five CPA firms who do them. They're rather specialized and I would imagine there's a great deal of similarities.
Yeah, there's a lot of copy and paste. And you, you can look through different audit reports. You'll see the same language. I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan?
No, no, because it, it just dovetails into this narrative that we're not being audited. Betty Abrams' group come in and do a impartial review of town departments, town workers, what they're, what the jobs were, what their obligations were, what they did. Some did above and beyond what they're required to do. So for people to say we, we generic, don't, don't have a handle on things or we're not, you know, we're not doing a deep dive, we just did it in the last couple of years. We had a, a company come in and do a salary study. Probably the wrong time to mention the word salary. But they came back with what we all know. Town of Dudley pays, does not pay top of the scale, pay actually more towards the bottom. And this board was committed to bring the people up to a category of pay. That was commensurate to their job ability, their experience, their education. So.
Market value.
Market value. Because we sort of have, when Greg Balconis was here, he did, we called the Dudley Discount. He had every job factored in at like 75% roughly of the market rate. Peter Fox was involved in that through personnel board in as a selectman. So it just, it just, I wish people would come to the answer instead of dragging, dragging the tiger by the tail. We have done a lot of what people think we haven't done. Like someone keeps talking about capital improvement 2018. They said we should do this. Well, a lot of it we did do. But people forget, capital improvement was an appointed committee. Like people entrust us by elected Mr. Carvajany. Oh, it wasn't capital.
Economic Development, that was the one that asked for the DPW study and some other.
Yeah, we did a DPW, specific DPW study, for example, to, to look for redundancies, to look for ways to, to save, to, to, to make things more streamlined. And it was defeated at town meeting. It got acrimonious about people lying, looking up jobs online, how much is, you know, so it's not like, as long as I've been on this board, it's not like we haven't done, in my opinion, due diligence and beyond. So now, I see what John's going to say. I'm probably jumping the gun on him. Establish an audit committee, make sure people absolutely objective. That's, that's a global goal. I'm not saying you can't find three people. You probably can. But a lot of that stuff's already been done by a paid professional that we as taxpayers, everybody here who's a Dudley resident, paid. Abrams was what? 25? Or DPW was 25. But, and we, we had.
Grant funded.
Grant funded. We paid professionals to come in and do what people are asking us to do again. And this stuff was all done in the last two years. DPW was probably maybe three at the most.
Well, Greg was.
Greg was still. That's what I'm saying. We've done it.
I'm going to fast forward here through the audit thing just because I know the fire chief has something. But I want to, I, I think we should put this on our next agenda. Or the one following, the one coming up is town meeting, correct?
Correct.
I would rather have it after that. I'd rather have it here where people can talk and there's cameras and recording and what have you. I, three minimum, up to five members. No one on that committee is employed, appointed, elected by the town.
Exactly.
Fresh faces.
No.
We just had a finance professional today, volunteer for the FAA. Awesome. I, I'm sure we can find three to five more to make recommendations. And I, I, I don't want to talk too much about the audit because I don't want to, I, I know we had a discussion. I don't want to, you know, add my opinion to it. So.
Yeah. I, I, I think it's all how you view what an audit is. See, in, in, during my career, my, I was very dependent on my audit committees. They protected me as, as being one of the executives, right? They ensured that financial safeguards were in place, right? It was a liability shield for me. And, and rather than me worrying about, are the, are the numbers correct? They worried about it. And there's a lot of benefit that comes from having a good partnership with a good auditor. Because they'll, they'll be your eyes and ears. And that's why it brings us to the second action line with the school. This, right? When we started, it was a bunch of farms, farmers that said, hey, we need to have a school for our kids, right? So they built a farm, right? And they're, well, the, the property owner shared the cost. 200 years later, you know, it's a 60, 70 million dollar animal. And we have people whose primary goal on the, right, to get on the school committee, isn't to become accountants or auditors or financial experts. They just want to get, try to get the best quality education for these kids, get them the services they need and equip them so that, you know, when they leave the nest, they can make good, solid livelihoods. But yet you look at this monster that has grown, an audit committee could actually allow them to get back to their mission, again, be a layer of protective insulation for them on the executive side and take care of the financials and making sure bills aren't paid twice and, and being the integrity and looking for the fraud and waste. So audit committees don't have to be bad. They can be very good.
You're saying audit, you want this volunteer committee to audit the town and the schools?
No, 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 no. Two separate ones. And, and the school is so big, I, I doubt you'll be able to even do a volunteer. You might have to, you know, give like, you know, stipends for people to serve on that. Because that's, that's, that's a pretty big enterprise, 70 million, 50, 60, 70 million dollars a year.
I, I think what we're going to end up with, with this audit committee, if I throw the tea leaves down, I don't know how much actual auditing they do. But I think they'd recommend what type of audits for the town.
And that's quite possible.
You've got basically your financial, which is what Scanlon's doing now. You've got a forensic, you've got an operational. Personally, I, I guess I'll sully it a little bit. I'd like to see the operational because that will point out efficiencies. And that will tell us, do we have a revenue problem? Do we have a spending problem? Do we have a mix of both? Is it tilted one way or the other? Forensic audits can get expensive. If you don't, th- those are generally done under a microscope, a specific thing. So if there's not a specific thing, that could get expensive quick. So maybe they could identify specific things. I don't know. But I think first to get three to five financial professionals together to agree on it. Preliminary stuff, I think it's a good idea.
And then if I can go to the third action item, which is something that you have the ability to do. No, thanks, Rich.
Oh, no. Number two, we already spoke.
Yeah, that was, that was, the, the school committee one was a separate one.
Is that another audit? Another, a different audit committee?
Yeah, this would be, yeah, because they're such, right? Because you have your general government. And the school is its own, own animal, own unique animal. And it would need its own unique audit committee tailored around with the school committee and superintendent. And those guys would need support with, you know, such a full-time accountant, you know, things like that. But if we go on to the third action item, this is something that I think especially for those on fixed income and for those worried, how do I get some additional funding when there are no other safety nets out there? This is where you can vote to establish basically a sec, a second option on the real estate tax bills. So you basically establish a voluntary community fund rate. And you, and the idea is that when a tax bill comes, you have your, your, your state mandated tax rate, which hypothetically is $10.16. But you also have another line item that's $3 that, that would basically be a charitable contribution. And a person, just how, you know, when you do your federal income or your state income, state of mass, do you want to pay the voluntary rate?
Guess what I say to that one?
But, but this at least.
Anyone in the decades that I've been doing that, that I've never seen one person check that box. And I say that just to temper expectations with this. I've never seen one person check.
Yep. And I, I often wonder as well, but you know. Yep. And I often wonder as well, but, you know-
We have it already, John. You can check on your tax, on your bill.
A tax bill that just came out?
I'll defer it to the collector.
I was just looking at it. How did I miss it?
He's getting steps in. Thank you, Rich, again. Appreciate it.
This is a plyometric workout. What's the, where, there's a check mark?
No, what were you saying? That the people have the ability to pay more?
People have the ability to pay more on their tax bill. Is that correct?
Didn't think there was an option for that one.
Do you wish to pay an additional?
Yeah, is there a question on there? Do you wish to pay an additional?
There was one time. Maybe it's been discontinued by, I've seen it.
Is this the, there was, there was a veteran option for a click? You could have done that. It was accepted, but at the end of the day, you were, you were eating up what you were going to make with the additional dollar, and it was never pursued, because it's an unstandard tax bill, and then it makes for an unstandard collection. I don't think there's an option for that. Are you, are you talking about the Community Preservation Act?
When we, we never had that, right?
We never, we never had it. The early part of it was, you know, the even dollar match, and it went-
If it was bespoke, I'd smoke.
I think it'd be a good idea to, you know-
Thank you, Rich. I appreciate it.
To give people a method of being able to specifically designate this go to highway, this go to fire, this go to this, and do that, because there's nothing to stop us, because we're not going to get any help from the state, which brings us to the real permanent solution, the last option.
That's the one I wanted to talk about.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, right, because if we don't address this, we're going to have these battles year after year after year. We have to reform Mass General, it's Chapter Seventy funding. Now, yeah, sure.
By the way, when Mr. Ruder was a selectman, he potted with Ann Goldie, Democratic state rep, Peter Durant, Republican state rep, bipartisan support. Dudley Board of Selectmen at the time was the first board in the state at his impetus to change that, and it died in committee. So again, with people, it's a great idea. We were literally the first town.
Yep.
With Ann Goldie, who's now the new position of Secretary of Urban, Rural Something, and Peter Durant, who's still a rep running for Senate. So 2014, we were trying to implement your idea.
Yeah.
And we got defeated. And it says here, highly unlikely.
That's right. It's going to go nowhere, especially with the House, Senate, and the governor.
Then Senator Moore.
It's not going to happen. So you got to do exactly what we do at town floor, at town meeting. You got to do a ballot initiative. Now, I can go out there as an individual and start a ballot initiative, and it would be like pushing water uphill. But fortunately, Dudley and a lot of you elected officials are members of the Mass Municipal Association, and you have counterparts. So what if you could get the Mass Municipal Association to actually sponsor a ballot question? You guys figure it out, work with the school committee. Certain things that have to get eliminated, the wealth factor, right? No one considers the multifamily home effect, right? Dudley, thirty-one percent of our housing stock is multifamily. They're paying the same tax rate as a single family, but might have three or four times the impact on school and resources, right? But the only way we're going to change this is through a ballot question. And the only legitimate way we have of being able to get a ballot initiative passed and override the Senate, and override the House, and force it down the governor, is to get Mass Municipal Association to back it, every school, every town, and you might even be able to get the Mass Teachers Association. Because as part of the reform, right, instead of relying solely on state aid, and so to speak, property tax, now you stake the current sales tax, and a certain portion is actually committed to it, where they can never monkey with it or move it like they did with the lottery. Remember lottery is supposed to be a hundred percent for education one day? Now, now they expect you to play, you know, do everything with the lottery money, right? So you want to make it bulletproof so that the legislature can't monkey around with it down the road. That's the final.
They did it with income tax.
What?
They did it with income tax. That passed, and they just ignored it.
Well-
And Chapter Seventy has been brought up in the past, and it gets defeated, because the wealthier towns inside the one-twenty-eight loop, even out as far as four-ninety-five, still receive a huge chunk of change every year from the state, and they fight it every time.
And then they over, they overfund their school, because they can.
Yeah. Wouldn't that be a nice problem for us?
Senator Marlowe looking at Mr. Mr. Chairman, just looked at Jonathan and I, and laughed in our face.
Yeah.
Said, you think my colleagues, like east of here, you know, would support this? He goes, you're dreaming.
Exactly. And that's why we have to do through a ballot question, because you neutralize, you cut the legs off the senators, the reps, and the governor, and you put it back into the hands of the people. Like the gas tax, like Prop Two and a Half. How do you think Prop Two and a Half got on the books? It was a ballot initiative. So you need to take control from them, and we have to do it together. There are other cities and towns in the same position as us. And I think you can do it.
Mr. Chairman, through Mr. Sullivan's point, we were the first ones to propose it, and I think within, how long, a week, we had calls from a lot of other towns that wanted the same thing. They signed on to it.
And the bigger, the bigger, richer affluent communities said to their reps, absolutely not. Actually, their reps, like Mr. Massey said, basically said, I'm not going to bring it forward, so it died. And they don't have to, I know Prop Two and a Half-
Yeah.
Was a ballot-wide initiative, but they don't have to always follow what the people want. We know that.
It could be forced. This would be forced upon them. And just imagine being an elected representative.
Well, I love this, I love this, but, you know, we-
I forget what it's like to serve with you.
But then, but then they said, but then a lot of people said it was anti-education for wanting to change the, they said it was anti-education to want to change that formula, which it wasn't. It was pro-taxpayer at the end of the day. So I'm a hundred percent agree with you. I mean, we took our lumps on that one, but I would do it again, because it was the right thing. But that's a, that's a big hill.
Yeah.
Maybe we can talk about how we-
Yeah. And whatever I can do to help behind the scenes, or at least on the grassroots side, but I want to thank you for your time. I've taken so much.
You have, you have. I'm not going to lie to you, you have. But you know what? This conversation, this conversation, John, needed to happen. There's a lot of garbage going on behind the scenes, just misinformation, all kinds of just angry stuff that's not going to solve anything. You can shake your fist at the clouds and yell at it, but it's not going to solve it. I've said it a million times. This is what solves it, when people like you get involved. Thank you.
Yeah. And again, we've agreed and disagreed on many things. I've never, and thank you, guys, for never taking it personal. You know, it's, it's the diversity of opinion and having these public discussions where you can, that makes things work.
Excellent.
So thank you, and thank you for tolerating the guys.
Good job, John. Thank you.
Fire chief.
I know.
Thanks.
Is that the administration that's going to charge him for this?
The sixth, the sixth question is going to be new furniture.
See what happened? You have a twenty-year-old chair?
I just wanted to address the earlier gentleman. I don't think the five individual items are the same as last time. I know the fire, from the fire department standpoint, we reduced our request by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the second override question, so it's not the same. And we also posted the amounts for every department and every question on the fire department website and the effects. Of course, we got the same negative feedback we always get from the same people, but we always still got some positive stuff that stated, you know, this sounds much more reasonable, let's get it done, let's get it passed, things like that. I also wanted to reiterate what the highway superintendent said, that, you know, morale's not great in my department either. I mean, I have a great group of guys down there, and other people, other towns are hiring. I've asked the area chiefs, and they're like, yeah, send them our way. You know, if that happens, we'll never get these good people back. The chiefs, the other chiefs say to me is, what's going on over there? I go, I don't know. You'd have to ask the people, so.
They can ask the people.
Yeah.
Thank you, chief.
Yep.
We've gone quite a bit. Anyone has anything?
Still in citizen.
Still in citizen comments, before I go, it can't be anything that is already on the agenda somewhere else. And the reason for that, we're going to keep, we have to keep the conversation by Robert's rules, the same topic in the same place. I'm going to allow every, just to give a thing, because I'm sure we don't want to be here till midnight. I'm going to give everyone five minutes tops, and we'll move it along. Mr., actually, yeah, Mr. Clark, you were, then Mr. Fox, then you in the front, John.
Good evening, gentlemen, everyone who stayed with us. My name is Richard Clark. I am a member of the Library Board of Trustees. And there is a language, and the language is something to the effect that the library has to be in continuous use, and it's for twenty years. And then it, the money's due, and the thirteen percent of the interest would apply. The library is only thirteen years old, so the twenty-year threshold has not been reached. And the idea that we're trying to work on now, and I think Mr. Ruder alluded to it earlier, is to keep the lights on. We have two issues to deal with essentially. One is certification, keeping the library certified. And the Mass Board of Library Commissioners has some very specific requirements in order for that to happen. I'm not sure how we're going to get through that, but we are doing everything we can to try to keep the lights on and some services provided. It may be less than you're used to seeing, but we're not, we're looking very hard at finding a way, trying to find a way to keep the building open in some manner. And hopefully, working with the Library Board of Commissioners, as Mr. Ruder has alluded to, council already approaching them, there may be some flexibility that we can get on that side of the ledger, if you will. Yet, it's an unknown, it's, as somebody's mentioned before, some of these things are uncharted, and that's pretty much where we are. We're out there, it's on the water, and we're looking for a beacon.
Mr. Clark, if I may ask a question, thank you for that. Is, are people in towns' library cards still working? Can they go to a different town?
Once the library is decertified, if that were the case, you could not. There are some libraries, I think it's thirty-six dollars for one local library for yearly card usage or option. You may, they would, you could use materials, typically use materials within the building. Taking them out of the building would be an issue.
Library is not decertified yet, correct?
No, no, no. The library is not decertified.
Thank you.
But people's library cards still work?
They still work, yes. They still work. Again, the library is not decertified. Let's be very clear, very-
So their, their card will work if they go to Worcester, Webster, Uxbridge, wherever?
They will now.
Right now, take a snapshot in time right now, it was.
Now, yes. The future is somewhat uncertain at this point, obviously.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Fox, and you're, you're in the front, you're next, after Mr. Clark.
My name is Peter Fox, Twelve Ridge Drive, Dudley. I'm going to repeat what Mr. Clark said. The library is open. It is not closed. The sign that was out front was way premature.
Yes, it was.
It is certified. It is available to certify, to service the public. The library trustees have been working with the town administrator, and there is enough monies in the budget to keep the library open through the vote in August and beyond. So whatever misinformation is out there, the library is certified and open to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Flynn, sorry, I didn't recognize you at first.
Appreciate it. Patrick Flynn, Forty-three Lions Road. Just a question on the, we've talked budget with the five sort of à la carte items here, but the school essentially is a bill, the nine-hundred thousand. In the event that the school does not pass an override, but say one of the other à la carte items does pass, are we now going to have to reduce their regularly funded budget to fund the school? Because now we're tied into using those funds for the two-and-a-half override?
If the override doesn't pass for the schools, I'm just trying to-
Yeah, so if the override doesn't pass for the schools, we still have to come up with nine-hundred thousand dollars, right? But let's say that the override passed for the, for the police department. So the police department's going to get level, level funded or plus to a ten percent, whatever they're asking for. And that hundred and twenty, a hundred and eighty thousand, forgive me if I don't have the number off the top of my head, has to be used for the override for the police department.
That's correct.
But we still need money for the school to pay. Are we going to then still unfund the police from the backside of their budget, from the original amount, to come up with that money? Or we come in some other place?
So that's where we're at, through the chair, that's where we're at with the July twenty-fifth proposed budget, with those, with, it predicates on the, on the school being, being fully funded, with the additional nine-on-one.
Right.
That's kind of why we want to do it in sequential order, that's first balance the budget, then back into it with the overrides, depending on what passes or what fails, because it's already funded.
It's already funded at that number.
Rebuilding a budget, as opposed to trying to back out of a budget.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Anyone else? Mr. Cedar in the back.
Just a quick thing again. David Cedar, Fifty-Five New Boston Road. Wanted to say, first of all, I've lived here for thirty-plus years. This is probably my second or third meeting. And I can do that because, and I love living here, and I can do that because of people like you keeping the lights on everywhere. And I do appreciate that. I don't want, I don't want to leave this meeting with you thinking that I'm somehow disappointed in the work that you people do, because I couldn't possibly do what you do. And I do appreciate that. And more, more to the point, the departments, the police department, the fire department, the highway department, all of these folks in the town that work so hard, I think I probably speak for most of the town, we sure appreciate what everybody does. My question is, with these ballot, with these questions coming up so soon, is there anything that a normal citizen like myself can do? It seems to me there's a communication issue, that there aren't enough people, enough voters, who know what the problems really are and why they're problems, because of all this, because of inflation, right? Everybody's costs going way up. I think there's a communication issue. So my question is, is there anything that we can do as citizens of the town to help you get the word out and help make the argument in favor of approving these questions?
Anyone want to take that? I'm thinking off the top of my head. I mean, we, I think we post things on the town's Facebook page. I'm not sure if you're on Facebook at all. You could share that.
I am. I haven't been to the town's page, though, so-
You haven't?
At least-
Well, that's step one. Go to the town's page, Town of Dudley.
I've gone, well, I've gone to the website, but not the Facebook page.
There's the Facebook page. You could share something there. I think the school has a page as well. I'm not sure what it is. You could share something there. I'm-
Talk.
Talk to your neighbors, yeah.
Yeah, talk, talk to your neighbors. Share your experience about coming here. You know, we let Mr. Brier, the esteemed John Brier, I've known for how many years now, you know, come and talk at a meeting for a couple hours.
Right, yeah.
And to bring, you know, to bring the conversation here, so we can all talk about it together. Share your experience. Tell people, come, ask your own questions, and say, hey, you know what? It wasn't scary, you know, being there, and I learned something, and I learned that, you know, the departments are struggling. I know the school needs their money. There's some things, you know, and you can add your own, you know, flavor to that, or how you feel. That's what I would recommend. Talk to people.
You can tell them you, you got up during citizen comments, and that the board's willing to have a conversation with just about anyone, just nothing threatening, no swears, conversation, that's how we're going to solve this.
Right.
Fair enough. Thank you very much, Mr. Cedar.
Anyone else, or are we, yes, moving on. Oh, Kathy. Sorry, I spoke for you there with the Facebook page. I'm just flying around ideas in the-
We do not have an official Facebook page. One item that I thought might be helpful is, you know, now we all know that the library's open. Perhaps we have, you know, the school committee, the select, and we could have a coffee and conversation night, and ask the public to come in, and if they want to have a kind of quieter kind of conversation with us, that might be helpful.
You mean, Mr. Chairman, may, instead, outside of a meeting, you mean, just like an office hours?
Yeah, outside of a meeting, like, kind of like having office hours.
Hmm.
Like, I think this is kind of, you know, for parents that work, I know my kids are, they're on their third hour of a babysitter, and it's hard for parents and families to do that, but maybe if they can come in a casual environment and know us personally and get to ask us questions, it might be helpful.
Yeah, we tried that, you know, with this one-on-one, we take turns being in an office, but maybe like a group one. I get it, Mr. Chair. That might be something to talk about.
Yeah, I remember I volunteered to come in Thursday nights for conversations.
That's what I was thinking.
I spoke with Mr. Zakowski a couple nights, and that was about it.
We were the only ones here?
Yeah, we were the only ones here. But, you know, maybe, maybe after this- Yeah, we were the only ones here, but, you know, maybe, maybe after this is finished, maybe we talk about starting that up again, just to keep the conversation going.
Well, if there's nothing else, we've started to have engagement, Mr. Chairman, on some stuff, so.
Oh, this is, I wish it was under different circumstances, but the attendance is good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, Rain Richards, co-founder of Mass Walking Tour Concert on September 17, 2023. Thank you for being patient, I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
My name is Rayanne Richards, I am a resident of Webster, I live on School Street. I am here tonight hoping to cleanse your palate of the last few hours and talk about something good and ask for your blessing for an event that we're trying to do here in town. My husband and I, for the last 12 years, have organized concerts all over the state. We've visited over 130 communities and done group hikes and concerts. We've utilized the Mass Cultural Council program to fund most of that, and for this very event that I'm talking about tonight, the Dudley Cultural Council did approve our request for funds. I believe you guys, actually, your office provided me with a support letter as well. So I'm really here to just kind of talk about what it is and see if you have any questions or any things that we should be concerned about in terms of keeping everyone safe and having a good day. Our plan is essentially to have a group meet off of Blue Heron Drive, which is where the kiosk is for the Dudley Rail Trail, which is also called the Quinne Bog River Valley Rail Trail. If you're not familiar with it, then you should be, it's a wonderful asset in your town, it's a very easy hiking trail. It's usually pretty well-maintained and flat, accessible to just about anybody. So we actually modified our original plan in order to partner with the Last Green Valley, are you familiar with them? So they're based in Connecticut, but they organize a Walktober every fall, where they do a whole host of events. It's so popular that they've extended into September and November. So this event is going to be a direct partnership with them. It'll be the second day of their Walktober. It will be featured in their annual guide, which has huge distribution and promotion. It'll be on their website, our website. We also partnered with another local organization called Local for Life. They do kids ecology programming. So part of our event will be a group hike with Local for, with the Last Green Valley. Part of our event will be a kids, well, really for anyone, but mostly geared towards kids, sort of an arts and crafts type of thing, where they'll be able to craft mason bee houses that they can bring home and put out in their lawns and help try to support pollinators and just educate them about that. And then our group will be doing an acoustic performance of music right there in the pine grove where the trail kiosk is. I have a copy of the event that I submitted to the Last Green Valley, if you would like to review it. But essentially, we're encouraging people to come. They can hike with us for about an hour, it's one mile each way. Do their craft with Local for Life, and then bring a chair and stick around and hear some nice music and maybe have some conversations with us and the Last Green Valley and Local for Life about other things that we could do in our community to just use this valuable resource that we have. Another thing that I'd like to point out is, there is a bridge down there, Ken's Bridge, which we will be walking to, and it was completed during COVID, so it never really actually got a proper public thing to sort of celebrate it. And while it isn't really an official celebration of Ken's Bridge, we really kind of love the idea of honoring him because the man that the bridge is named after has passed away now. And I think he would really just love the concept of what we're trying to do here and what we're offering to the public. It's obviously available to anyone, to older folks, to young families, to people my age, people your age, just anybody who likes to walk and who likes music. We have already arranged for a porta potty service to come for the event, which is going to be from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. We also have a rain date for it of October 1st. And Last Green Valley are going to be the ones actually leading our hike, which is something that they're very familiar with and do all over, you know, Mass and Connecticut through the whole fall. So I feel pretty confident in their ability to do that as well. So I was hoping that you would grant me your blessing for the event, and if there are any concerns that you might have for me, things that I can resolve or questions that I can answer.
What's always asked is, public safety, okay with this?
Just a question, how many people do you anticipate?
We really don't know what to gauge, because we've done these events all over the state. Typically, it can be 50 to 100, it could be more. It really kind of depends on the day and the weather and people's ability. There may be people who come and actually want to walk, and there may be people who just come for music. So it's sort of a hard question to answer, but.
Parking would be probably an issue if there were too many people, that's all.
Mm-hmm. So I had anticipated, you know, obviously, Blue Heron Drive is a pretty quiet neighborhood. There's a lot of off-street parking there. There's also the option where people could utilize the parking lot that's on Schofield Ave and actually just do half of the hike and walk up from there with the rest of the group. They could also utilize off-street parking along the driveway that goes to the Webster wastewater treatment plant, which is just on the other side of the bridge. And then, you know, other than that, this is the type of thing where it would be mostly families, so I would hope there would be some carpooling happening to try to.
Other than that, that's my other concern.
Are you, Chief, are you okay with this? You're okay with this? Okay. Anything from the board, Mr. Marcy?
No, Mr. Chairman, this is Rayanne, thanks for coming in, this was, you know, these are the things that we wanted to see, there's more to Dudley to do, and these are just special things that we want to have people to take advantage of if they'd like. And, you know, you mentioned Ken, Ken Bukevich, I remember when, during COVID, Kerry and I went to that, and, you know, I wish more people could have been there for that. So I think I'm really excited for you guys to include that as part of it, so. Do you need, are we needing a vote?
Yeah, we'll vote.
All right, then I move to that we approve the Mass Walking Tour concert on September 17, 2023, with the rain date of October.
October 1st, 2023.
2023.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
What's the timeframe?
1:00 to 4:00 p.m.
From 1:00 to 4:00, yeah, I'll amend my motion to include that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good catch, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next on the agenda, Board of Selectmen, vote to change date of October special town meeting from Monday, October 30, 2023, to Monday, October 16, 2023, or take any other action relative thereto.
This follows, Mr. Chairman, our last meeting where we were up against the timeline of getting the tax rate set in time. And both the assessor and I believe the town accountant have discussed this, and October 16 is a better option than the 30th, so we'd like to amend that date.
Any discussion?
What time?
Mr. Landry asked what time?
It would be the same original posted time from the 30th, just a change in date.
6:30 for outside of the meeting.
Correct.
6:30 Board of Select meeting, 7:00 p.m. town meeting. Got it. No further? Board to entertain a motion?
Chairman, I vote, Mr. Chairman, I vote that we change the date of October special town meeting from Monday, October 30, 2023, to Monday, October 16, 2023, same times.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Next on the agenda, vote of the Board of Selectmen, bond council request.
It's a rich thing.
Rich thing.
Wearing some shoe leather there, Mr. Treasure Collector, your name.
Good evening. There should be some things in your packet. We're going to borrow money on August 1st. Ahead of that, Bond Council is going through and is looking for some assurances. Some of the assurances are rather simple, some address a specific need. So if I could, I think there's some paperwork in there for a vote of the Board of Selectmen. I could have that read, made as the motion, and accept it, that would be a good thing?
Okay.
Thank you.
That's the vote of the Board of Selectmen. I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen, the Town of Dudley, Massachusetts, certified that a meeting board held July 10, 2023, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which quorum was present. Following vote was unanimously passed, all of which appears on the official record of the board in my custody. Vote that the maximum useful life of the equipment to be financed with the proceeds of the $280,000 borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed October 25, 2021, Article 17, is hereby determined pursuant general law, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, to be.
That would be five years, Mr. Chairman.
Five years. Further voted that the maximum useful life of the equipment to be financed with the proceeds of the $110,000 borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed October 25, 2021, Article 14, is hereby determined pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, to be five years. I further certified that the vote was taken at a meeting open to the public, that the vote was not taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above vote, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.032B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting and remained so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the subject matter of this vote were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law, Chapter 30A, Subsections 18-25, as amended, dated July 10, 2023.
Through the chair.
Mr. Ruder. Just so the board is aware, Michelle and the town clerk have verified all the facts you just read into there. Red is part of that letter that Richard is asking to sign, he has all the votes as well. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if there's any questions, I'll keep it to a single sentence. This says to Bond Council, the public safety vehicles and the brain machine are not going on beyond five years as far as useful life for borrowing. In other words, we're not taking a 30-year note out on a Palouse Cruiser, which is about a five-year item.
So do we need a, do we need a motion and a vote?
Did Mr. Landry say ISO move at the end of that?
ISO move.
I think Mr. Sullivan has it, thank you.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, nice job.
Thank you, sir.
If I could get something through the chair.
Certainly.
Looking for a motion that's making the declarative statement that the vehicles and equipment to be acquired with these proceeds of the bonds will be owned by the town and operated only by town personnel for public safety and road treatment purposes, as applicable, if such, and we're not even going to get into if such is not the case. So what it's saying is, the Town of Dudley has deemed these purchases to be a good idea. We are operating them, the Royal, we, the Town of Dudley's public safety, highway, everybody is an employee, we're not renting this out to Snow Control for a private entity or any armored car service, anything like that. Purchased by the town to be used by the town for town business and not for rent.
Certainly, move and approve that. ISO move.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. I think just for clarity, the motion and the second was one on, was in reference to what Mr. Carmen Yetti stated, correct?
Correct.
Just for clarity.
We have a copy if you'd like to read it or reread it.
We're fine, just wanted that on the record, that's all. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next up, year-end transfers, Board of Selectmen vote transfers? Or take any other action relative thereto, Mr. Carmen?
One other item, and through the chair to Michelle Jervis, item four there, a certified copy of the Report of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and it was, they're submitted to the Select. Take it for tomorrow if I could, so.
We're good?
We'd want to get it signed.
Mr. Landry? Yep. Mr. Clerk. That is the year-end transfers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we.
We're going to move to approve the transfers from.
We have to move to approve the transfers, and you have to. Do we need account numbers, or just?
Yeah, just, let's do the account numbers, just to be on the safe side.
Account numbers.
Year-end transfers fiscal 2023, Town of Dudley. Account number 0001145594002, Webster Dispatch, $20,034.31 to account 0001210513101. Let me read the whole line of just from and to.
From and to, she's doing it.
From account 0001135511201. Counting salary, $4,898.86 to account 001, which should be 300001, 123511501. From account 0001135511201, counting salary $2,000. To account 0001420574902. From account 0001135511201, counting salary $2,000. To 0001220574902. From account 0001135511201, counting salary $2,000. To account number 0001210574902. From account number 0001420570002, highway expenses $2,188.27 to account number 0001240514601. From account 0001420543002, machine maintenance, amount of $12,069.88 to account number 0001220515001. From account 0001429571402, road maintenance, amount of $2,930.12 to the account 0001220515001. From account number 0001429571402, road maintenance, amount of $10,856.20 to the account number 0001156522502. The total amount of $58,977.64. An ISO move. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing, Mr. Marcy? Hearing, Mr. Marcy?
Yeah, just reiterate this, these are just part of the normal year-end close things that we do every year to line up everything.
Correct. Thank you. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous. Department of Communication. Mr. Carmini, do you have anything? Oh, he signed this. He did. Oh, we all did.
Where do you, where do you want me to begin? I, I appreciate everybody's time and their patience. There's only two of us in there right now, and it's only in that one office. So remember, you have the ability to put a payment in the drop slot. You have the ability to, to actually be here on a Thursday night. That was the, the one point I stood that I wanted to make. There's a, a contingent, an identifiable portion that still comes in, back in on a Thursday night. Believe it or not, I took over $10,000 in cash today, so there is. Dudley's a great place because the demographics are just that broad. There are some people who want to tap a button and pay it or have it escrowed. And there's another group where it's still cash on the barrel ahead. So long as we can still physically do it, Thursday nights are still available. Might be limited going forward. I think I've talked enough, but anybody's got a question or anything, email's probably the best way to get in touch. Said at the time, last time, said at the time before, there seem to be a great deal of experts to this point. No one's really reached out and asked for source documents for things. Any member of the public, Board of Selectmen, of course. If you need a document, what did this cost us two or three years ago? If I can't find the answer, we'll look to get it. And if it's not specifically with the Treasurer Collector's office, I'm sure internally we can find the answer to that, because I know previous year's budgets were brought up. Beyond that, thank you.
Thanks for your help tonight.
Thank you.
Yes.
Answered a bunch of questions. I appreciate it.
If, if I could circle back to that, really, I grabbed a two-inch stack of paper and went down to the office to get two more things because they were timely. You want to keep the public's attention, but if we need a number ahead of time, we can get that number or a better approximation or a source for it. Happy to provide those numbers. You know, you don't know what the future is going to be, but, you know, something that's already happened. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. George, do you have anything? Nothing from George. Jeff?
I'm all set.
You're all set. Dean, are you all set? We're all set. No other department heads. Board of Selectmen comments. Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Again, thank everyone for participating tonight. It's much better in an open setting, open dialogue, as opposed to a person sitting at home spitballing or someone we can't even verify is a real person. As everyone knows, I serve as the Board of Selectmen's representative on the Southern Wisconsin County Dispatch and I just want to briefly touch on a letter I received yesterday, I believe, from Greg Linsky, who's the director over there, and I'm not going to give you the exact number, but they received over $800,000 in grants. Some of it was helped Dudley fire for digital radio migration. Some was for Webster, similar, radio control station dispatch. There were some that were not funded in this cycle, but I just want to reach out and thank Greg and his staff. $800,000 that we don't have to come up with, portion of our lucrative endeavor that we have here is a great number. So I want to thank Mr. Linsky for his hard work and thank everyone again for participating tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to reach out and thank everybody for all their suggestions and advice from a lot of the folks at Dudley. I know that we've worked hard to integrate them into our decision-making and we thank you all. I think by doing this, we've come to where we are today. Communication is, I think, is all-time high. We just got to get the word out there. Everybody, obviously, costs have gone up everywhere and everybody needs more money to operate at, at the same level. And I don't want it to be, you know, a packing order. I'd really like everybody's support just to pass all of them and let's get through this and start planning for the future. We can't afford to diminish what I've always stood for. Number one, as a Board of Selectmen, is, is public safety. And we have to make sure that that's supported and they're funded, what we're asking for, for obvious reasons. No matter what your personal feelings are, we're all going to benefit from them being where they need to to provide the best possible service to all of us. I'm, I'm just pleased. Let's, let's try to do the best we can. We'll all be in it together. Because divided, we can't do it. But together, we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Marcy?
Thank you, Chairman. Well said, Mr. Landry, Mr. Sullivan. This was a really great meeting. It was long, but, you know, it was worth it to spend the time having the conversation. Someone who's very respected and the account that I respect, John Prior, to come in and, and, you know, talk to us about some stuff for us to think about. It's what we asked for. I'm, I'm most happy to follow through with that. We, we still have a plan we need to follow, but there's some things that we, you know, we should obviously think about on, on these action items. So that, that was good. Yeah, distinct level of engagement is, is up and that's a good thing. I liked bringing the conversation here so it can reach more people. And, you know, people can be, be part of the solution, be more involved, like Mr. Cedar today. I thought that was, that was a great question he asked, how, what can, what can townspeople do to help? And that's just, you know, talk to each other and then, you know, come forward, which is great. We have a new FAA, someone starting on the FAA, still here. I think that was, that was a great thing, getting some more help there. And I still, even though we have overrides with the, with the menu option on there, I still think the town needs to stand together. You know, we can't have one part of the town fall apart where the other, the others are, are doing well. That's, that, someone who sits up here, that's, that's not what we are supposed to do as leaders. We need to make sure that we're all, we're all pulling on the same end of the rope in the right direction. So I would ask everybody to look at it through that lens when they, when they, when they decide what kind of town they want to have. So I thank everybody for their time and participation. Look forward to more of it. It's nice to see a full room, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marcy. Yes, I agree. It was good to see a full, full room. Wish it was under better circumstances. I wish Mr. Cedar was still here. I was going to use this time to invite him to join a board. He seemed to compose his thoughts well and speak well. We, we could use you, sir, if you're at home watching this. Yeah, tonight was a good conversation. We should keep having these every week. Well, not every week, every other week, every meeting. We're not there yet, but we'll get there. We'll get there. One thing I think is that I, I usually, and this isn't a negotiation, but usually people don't get what they want. You usually get what you can. And, and I think somewhere we're going to meet in the middle, and I say we, I'm not a car salesman, but. We're going, we're going to find common ground somewhere where people can have an amount that they can afford in having the services that they want. We can't, we're not Jerome Powell. We can't print money. We'll figure this out. That's all I've got.
I have one more thing, Mr. Chairman, I forgot to mention.
Mr. Marcy.
The other thing I heard tonight is the library's open. Never closed. Right? I think there was some, of all the things we've talked about in all of these meetings over the last six months about scare tactics, that was a scare tactic. I can call it for what that one was, so. Library's open.
And I'm going to expound on that and then ask for a motion for adjournment. I had asked Mr. Clark about the library cards because I had heard from a number of people that their cards weren't working in other towns, but that myth has been debunked, it seems.
Yep.
So those library cards are not shut off. Good thing.
That's right.
That's all I've got. Chairman, will you entertain a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.